Forty-five, we're a few minutes late, but we're going to get started now. Thank you all so much for hanging in there with us. As you can see, we had a very vibrant work session, and there is more to come. If you are interested in what is happening with our parks and recreation programs, our buildings, as well as our Earth Day activities, please stay tuned after we deal with these zoning cases. I know there are quite a few people here to talk about 50-yard line. You all are last, but certainly not least. And as soon as we have a quorum, which will be two more council members, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right, Mr. Clerk, it appears that we have a quorum present. I will call this meeting to order. This is, oh, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the Alcohol Zoning Public Hearing for March 14th, and this is a roll call for this meeting. The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gomes, District Two, will be absent this evening. The Honorable Helen Zee Willis, District Three. The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please go ahead and sound the first item.
First item is listed as Item Three on tonight's agenda. It's alcohol licenses, rezonings, variances, and special use permit cases. This is for public hearing only. It's a public hearing, text amendment, T-8001, and ordinance to amend the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances and the City of South Fulton zoning ordinance to bring the ordinance in compliance with changes to the zoning procedures law implemented by HB 1405, Georgia laws at 881, and for other lawful purposes. C-D-R-A.
Mr. McClendon.
Oh, I got you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Reggie McClendon, interim director of C-D-R-A. This is a text amendment, a public hearing, to change the City of South Fulton zoning code in response to House Bill 1405, which was passed in 2022 by the Georgia General Assembly. There was a, that bill included a mechanism in which those changes were not going to affect until July 1 of 2023. So that's why we're coming to you now to bring these changes in hopes that they will be passed prior to your council recess in June, and we can begin implementing them as soon as possible. HB 1405 made a few general changes to the zoning procedures law, and I, you all should have a memo in your packets which outline these changes, as well as a copy of that bill that was passed in the, in the last session. The, and the reason that we're doing this via public hearing, Georgia's zoning procedures law doesn't actually require a public hearing for text amendments. However, our city code does require a public hearing, and so we do have to follow our minimum procedures, as well as state minimum procedures. HB 1405 expanded the zoning procedures law to address not just zoning decisions, which are decisions that are made via council, such as rezonings and special use permits, but it also, it expanded that law to address decisions that were delegated to officers, boards, and agencies here in the City of South Fulton. We do have a zoning board of appeals, which does make final decisions on behalf of the city in the cases of variances, as well as appeals of official administrative decisions. And there are also decisions that are delegated to the director of C-D-R-A in that person's position as director. The, the definition of zoning decision was amended to add a variance or a condition that is considered in conjunction with a rezoning or a special use permit decision. Here in the City of South Fulton, we do have concurrent variances, and so that this definition would encompass what we currently have in our code as a concurrent variance. It created the definition for quasi-judicial officers, boards, and agencies, which once again would now pertain to our zoning board of appeals. It does require a public hearing and notice for any quasi-judicial zoning decision of at least 30 days prior to that public hearing. And it also requires written notice to be sent to the property owner at least 30 days before the hearing. It creates a complicated procedural scheme for when a local government initiates a rezoning of a single-family zone property to allow for multifamily uses, which was a, which was something that was put in the bill, really to be kind of specific to the City of Atlanta and some of their zoning procedures. But it does apply statewide, so we have to address it. And it also rewrites the appeal mechanism for zoning decisions. So in Appendix A of this memo that I've written to you, it really outlines each of the changes. There are, I believe, eight, there are nine changes to the zoning code that we've made. The first change references our text amendments. As I just said, the reason why we're having a public hearing for this text amendment is because our code requires it. There's a portion of that code section that says that we don't have to post signs or mail notification letters when we are doing text amendments. What we've done there is added in just a little clause that says unless otherwise required by law, because in some instances now, we will be required to post signs and mail notification letters if we change the text of the zoning code in a particular manner. Section two is just a cosmetic change. Section three is really a change that references state law instead of including the entire scheme about changing, about city-initiated changes to the zoning code, which would allow multifamily uses on single-family property, on property that was previously zoned, single-family. What we've done here is just reference the state code, so that if there is a text change that, or a zoning change that fits that definition, then we'll just follow those procedures as set out in state law. And they are fairly extensive, so as to not be confusing and include all of those in our code, we just reference the state code. Section four, a section about our public hearings. There's a clause here that says we should not deny any member of the general public to speak during a public hearing. While that is certainly our goal, we don't want to hamstring ourselves by, by placing that in our code. And then if, for any reason, we end up not following that, then we could potentially be in violation of our minimal procedures. There are backstops to this in which we can add additional time to public hearings if there are a large number of members that, of the public that want to speak. But this is my recommendation that we take that particular clause out of the code. Section 804.03 is language that requires our planning commission to make a recommendation within 60 days. This language is in conflict actually with a different section of the code, which requires a decision within 30 days. And my recommendation is that both of those sections should be removed from the code, because number one, we actually don't always follow that, and number two, it's impractical. Section six is about a procedure that we have, what called administrative modifications, in which when, when we have a zoning that includes conditions, we have this portion of our code where the property owner can come in and change those conditions with permission of the director of C-D-R-A, and we call that an administrative modification. HB 1405 makes this illegal, because you have to have a public hearing, so all of those would need to come before council. And so I have suggested that we remove that section. Section seven is in regards to public hearings. It allows for certain appeals and variances to be handled administratively without a public hearing. Once again, we cannot, we can no longer do that based on HB 1405. Section eight is the public notice requirement of 30 days, which is now required prior to any variance hearing. It's my suggestion, I did not write this into this text amendment, but it's my suggestion that we do away with administrative variances and administrative minor variances. It doesn't save us any time any longer because of the 30-day notice period. We, we're practically going to be 45 to 60 days out of granting someone a variance once they request it. So honestly, we should really be forwarding all of those to our zoning board of appeals. The final change here, section nine, is a change to the appeal procedure. It's, they changed the appeal procedure from a writ of, what we call a writ of certiorari, to a petition for review, so it just makes that textual change. I'll reserve any time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Wait, Mr. McClendon, I'm, I am looking for this text amendment.
It's in NOVUS.
Okay, it's in NOVUS, but it's not in, it's not in this agenda packet here. Okay, I'll find that. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, were there any speakers for or against this text amendment?
For this text amendment, public hearing, we did not receive any comments and support or opposition to this hearing.
All right, seeing none, I will close this public hearing, and I am going to go to the Q. I will ask that all, if there are any speakers, I see Dr. Ryle. I just want to make sure for our newer council people that you do flip to our six o'clock meeting in NOVUS Agenda, the special call meeting. All right, Dr. Ryle.
I wanted Mr. McClendon to clarify about people's ability to speak in a public hearing. I know currently we have it that you have to be a resident or business. How is that addressed? Is that out the door, or does it mean that our current one stands?
The, the, I think you might be conflating the public hearing requirements with the public comment requirements for council.
Okay.
Our public hearing requirements don't have any regulations as to residency.
Okay.
For the public hearings for zoning cases.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, what, I'm sorry, what is the, because now I'm confused. What is, what is the change that you are recommending then around public hearings?
I just want to be clear that the HB 1405 is, is part of the zoning procedures law, so it's specific to zoning changes.
Okay.
It doesn't have anything to do with our public comments at council.
All right.
Public hearings and, and public comments are two different things.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Willis.
I have one question, and that is around the notifications that go out. Because I know in our current zoning code, we changed it from half a mile radius to mile radius. And I just want a clarification. Are you recommending that we go back to half a mile radius and then we not be required to mail unless it is a, let me put it in a layman's term, a real material change to the code?
The, that's not part of this text amendment. It does not change the distance requirement. This is what I will say, especially to the specific point of administrative modifications. That is a pain point for some developers that I've spoken with, because if, if they have conditions to their zoning and it's a very de minimis condition, something that does, does not have a large effect on the zoning, they'll have to come back before council to change that. And if they have to do that notification of the mile radius, it really adds a lot of expense and time to that, to that process, wherein it could be, be something that could happen much more quickly without it.
And, and I understand, and I, and I appreciate that, that feedback, but I am probably going to give a little pushback, and, and here's why. Number one, that's what residents who live here ask for. We are a young city. We have a lot of development going, and we have a digital divide. We still have a lot of senior residents that don't get emails, don't get, that's not on social media. And so requiring developers who want to come in our city and do, I'm not anti-development. I think we got to have development, but we also want to make sure that we are working in sync with residents, and they know, they have the most opportunity, they have the best opportunity to know what's happening, what's being developed in their community, and also have an opportunity to participate. And so that going from half a mile to a mile was, was what residents requested. And I'm a little, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to seek clarity. Are we saying we're not going to mail notices, or we're only going to? That's what I'm trying to seek, because I, I'm not in agreement with that. But that's just me.
We are going to continue to mail notices.
But what's, so what's the text amendment doing?
Well, quite a few things, but the.
I mean, as far as the mailing, not all of, just as far as the mailing pieces.
It doesn't change anything as far as the mailing goes. It creates more situations in which the mailings have to occur, because it takes away situations where decisions can be made administratively, meaning by the C-D-R, C-D-R-A director.
Okay, I do agree with that. I, I thought you, it was something you mentioned about mailing. I'll go back and read it. I could take that offline, because I don't want to belabor this, but I don't want to limit that in any way, or change that in any way, and I'm not agreeable to changing it to a half a mile radius. I understand what developers are saying, but we got to find a balance. And our community right now is a huge digital divide. And right now, I got three developments coming to my area, and half of the community don't even know that somebody's trying to bring 110 townhomes to their area that's going to bring density and a lot of traffic congestion. And it's probably a good thing, but at least they need to know about it and have some input. Thank you.
But before you, before you leave, I think what, what you are saying, and it was just a recommendation, Mr. McClendon, would it be, and I actually agree with Councilwoman Willis. When I was a councilman on national, we had five different subdivisions, build over 100 homes. Could we have a two-tiered system of requirement so that if someone is just building one home or an addition on a home, they don't have the same distance as, distance requirements as someone who's building 100 homes?
There, well, there are some limitations that we can place on it. In fact, when I, when I wrote that into the code, I, I think we limited, limited, limited it and said that if a rezoning or a special use only affects one single parcel where there's a single-family home, then that person would not have to do the whole mile. I think they could still just do the half mile. So we could do some creative things like that to try to lessen the burden on people who are doing smaller projects than building an entire subdivision.
Okay, awesome. Seeing no further comments, I will go ahead and close. I did close the public hearing already. I will go ahead and sound the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is a public hearing. It's U-22 Jazz 013. This is a request to consider a special use permit for the operation of a daycare facility to an existing place of worship within AG-1 zoning district on 6.83 acres of land. The subject property is located at 4095 Stonewall Tower Road within the Cliftondale Overlay District, District Three.
All right, Mr. McClendon.
Again, this is a request for a special use permit to operate a daycare facility at a place of worship. The staff recommendation is approval with conditions, and the planning commission recommendation is approval. The conditions that the staff has recommended is that the applicant shall incorporate all required development standards for operating a daycare facility as outlined in the zoning ordinance. And the second condition is that adequate screening shall be enforced on the subject property considering the proposed use and surrounding uses.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, were there any speakers for or against?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did not receive any comments and support or opposition to this case.
All right, is the applicant present? Is it, uh, is, is the applicant for this special use permit for the daycare present? All right, uh, seeing her, not hearing them, uh, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and uh open the floor for questions or comments from council, starting with the district representative, Councilwoman Willis. Do you have any? Do you have, do you have anything for this item? This is in your district.
Recommended approval and, I mean, I'm good, it'd come on the next agenda for, for a vote.
Just checking it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item's item three on the listed agenda, this is a public hearing, Z twenty-three dash zero-zero-one. Request to rezone a property from C one to C two zoning district to construct five thousand square foot building for quick oil change services. Currently zoned C one on one hundred and two point nine acres of land, the subject property is located at sixty-four thirty-five Old National Highway, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine, and within the Old National Overlay District.
Mr. McClendon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is Z twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, a request to rezone from C one Limited Commercial to C two General Commercial District. Uh, the applicant is Mr. Derek Oversaw, uh, on behalf of Valvoline. Uh, the staff recommendation is approval with conditions and the planning commission recommendation is denial. Uh, the, the staff condition recommendation is to provide a staggered setback of all out parcel buildings, uh, staggered setbacks shall be determined by the placement of the buildings on either side of the building in question. Uh, setbacks should provide a minimum fifteen foot variation for out parcel buildings as measured from the curve of Old National Highway. Uh, that was a condition, by the way, that was included in the original rezoning of this property um in Fulton County. Uh, but that's a staff recommendation with approval, once again, the planning commission recommendation is denial.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, I see my friends from Old National, so I know we have some speakers in opposition. Uh, is the applicant here, Mr. Adams? Okay, please come forth, and if uh everyone speaking in favor could stand on this side, my left, your right, uh, everyone speaking against, if you would line up on my right, your left, you can go ahead. I'm gonna put ten minutes on the clock, we're gonna turn the clock towards you, uh, please keep in mind, this will be your entire speaking time, so you may wanna reserve some time for rebuttal.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jeff Walker, uh, I'm with Forsight Group, I'm a civil engineer, I represent Valvoline and C S C Properties, uh, this is Port Wolve, he is with C S C Properties, um, and we represent Valvoline, uh, the building is a two thousand forty, two thousand and forty-one square foot building, single building, uh, on one point two acres, um, and with, it is a three bay oil change, uh, there's thirteen parking spaces, we have access all the way around the building to provide fire protection, uh, and we do have, we have provided a landscape plan, so I'm just here to answer any questions that y'all have, technical questions about the project, and Court can speak to Valvoline, this is a corporate-run store, um, and Court can answer any questions about the, how the store is operated.
Uh, thank you guys very much for your time. Uh, I, I engaged Councilwoman Williams and uh Artie Jones, and we talked about economic development on Old National Highway, we have a number of projects in the works, we have two in permitting now at Chipotle in this Valvoline, uh, that's in the works with others behind it. This was one of the things that uh Councilwoman Williams discussed, that the car care on Old National was hit or miss, and this being a corporately-run facility, this being a facility that is gonna be kept up to corporate standards, uh, it's environmentally friendly, uh, and it's quite clean, and they've got standards, good management team, uh, and direct corporate leadership is something that they were asking for, so that's something that we thought made sense, and um here we are, happy to answer any questions.
All right, you wanna go ahead and um begin calling the speakers against and opposition?
Yeah, I did receive two cards, uh, question to speak in opposition, uh, Mr. Michael Venable and Alvin Reynolds, please remember to state your name and address, uh, when you provide a comment, please.
Good evening, it's Michael Venable, fifty-seven twenty Montelee Circle, District Six. It is unfortunate that we did not include all the information for this case. The previous zoning for the plaza deliberately and specifically had guidelines of what was acceptable and what was not. That agreement was conferred by the residents, the Old National Community Alliance, by the business group, the Old National Merchants Association, and by the developer, Mr. D. Giovanni. I even noticed that the senator was there at the dedication along with myself. In that development, we had looked at the previous development beside it. If you go back and look at the front face, you have an auto service, older one, a car wash, a package store, a gas station, fast food, chicken, and a cellular, another gas station, cross the street, there's another gas station, go down the, the side street, another fast food chicken. We cannot continue to do the same things over and over again. When talking to the developer with that plaza, everybody talked about rooftops, yeah, that's one part, but they forget about everything else. It is about what you look like, not only what it looks like, but who it looks like. Now, if I'm gonna start over again, right on the front face of this plaza with another auto service facility, that affects the development of everything else in that plaza. There are certain people who are just not going to be there beside it, and the ones when somebody leaves and you try to get somebody else, your front door does not look good. I encourage, and I've looked, I'm gonna have to buy some material, uh, a, a, a transfer so I can go to my old computer and pull out all the, the recommendations, and I've asked I T. to pull it also. That was delivered in there, lots of things about beauty, there was fast food, we talked about drive-throughs, these were things that did not, that actually hurt the development of the plaza. At the end of the meetings, we always come back, oh, I'm glad you all came out, I'm glad, you know, you're involved. This would be a slap in the face to this community as much time and effort that we spent on having a degraded development come about, to see a vision for this community, to have it disturbed by changing this zoning. Everybody knows it, even the developer hinted to it, that there was something in the deed that restricted this. This would be wrong, I'm hoping that we'll support this community like it should be so that we can go forward in a positive manner and not continue to back up.
It's Alvin Reynolds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I won't belay you long. Mr. Venable did an awesome job. And when we stand here and we talk about development, I wanna get your attention focused on one thing here, and that's zoning, district overlays. These things were put in place to protect the integrity of certain, of areas, of our communities and so forth. Often asked that when these projects are being developed, does the developer know and have they read the district overlay in the area in which they are developing? Now, when you talk about this type of development, there has to be some things that are not gonna be, are not gonna run in conjunction with the district overlay in Old National area. One of them being roll-up doors, that's just one of them. Has that been addressed? These types of things need to be addressed beforehand and not afterwards. Bring these things to the forefront so that we can move forward. For me, this is all about zoning. You go from a C one to a C two. You generalize the area, meaning that you're opening your front, back, side doors for whatever development that can come in that particular area and that particular space, and there's nothing you can do about it. We have got to start to protect what we're doing, especially in this area, not just this area, but all over the city. We cannot just pick and choose what we want in one area or the other, we have to abide by the zoning codes throughout. And I just admonish you to understand that, hey, these things were put in place for a specific reason, and we need to adhere to that. We need to make sure and be certain that we're protecting what the community is asking for and what the community wanna see and what the community wanna move away from. It has to be taken in consideration, has been stated, that statement has been made here tonight. It's just so often that it seems that the community's voices falls on deaf ears. Now, say what you want, grandstanding, political, whatever you wanna say about it, but the fact of the matter is, these zoning cases were put in place, and these district overlays were put in place for a reason. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers in opposition, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, you do have a few minutes on the clock for rebuttal, did you wanna make a rebuttal?
I just wanted to speak to the, to the code. We spend a good bit of effort reviewing those codes, uh, the Old National Overlay District, the general code, um, of course, we do deed research on the property, um, there's nothing I have found, there's nothing our attorneys have found that says we can't meet Joe's code. I've permitted several projects now here in the city and, and staff ensures we meet the code when we come through for the review, so I don't, I didn't find anything in the code about roll-up doors being, being not allowed. Um, we're simply asking to rezone from C one to C two, this single parcel, the other parcels remain C one, um, so we're only asking for this one parcel that's one point two acres of property. Um, I, I just want y'all to understand, we, we do study the code quite a bit, and it's been a good bit of effort to understand before we make the request, um, for this type of rezoning.
And not just the code, but also the title work, if there's any sort of R E A. that's associated with that development, there's nothing that we had to get a variance for or an agreement from L A Fitness, Walmart, whoever that is, in order to put this here. It's a rezone from C one to C two, uh, Jeff and I do that from Calhoun to Stockbridge, I mean, we do that all over, that's, that's something that we present on a routine basis, this is not something out of the ordinary. And again, we, we engaged from the beginning, we engaged uh the community leaders and, and asked what uses made sense, and this is where we ended up. So I appreciate y'all's time.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open the floor to public comments, beginning with the district representative, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
I don't know that I really have a lot of comments, um, outside of, um, Old National's a commercial corridor. Whether C one or C two is commercial development. The plaza, as you all know, has been sitting with all of those out parcels facing Old National with nothing on them for some time, pretty much since it was first built. And I appreciate Dr. Ral and her assistance in, you know, helping me in the very beginning when I first got elected, to understand what could and could not go on a commercial corridor, and with the assistance on holding my hand and walking me through what the possibilities were for putting developments on Old National Highway. It's been a while since we've had something open up, and I think to have not just this new business, but the number one motor oil in the country, so we're not talking about just anybody, we're talking about the number one motor, motor oil company in the country who has these, um, facilities available, not just around our state, but, um, even last week in Pigeon Forge, um, there were two along the commercial corridor that have, that has a residential back. So this is nothing that is unusual or different from anything that's been done in any other commercial part of the state. If you do enough driving and traveling beyond the four walls of your house, you can see how other neighborhoods in other states are laid out that are commercial corridors like Old National. It's twenty twenty-three, and at some point, we have to stop holding on to what was intended twenty years ago and look forward to what's going to be needed twenty years from now. And so I think I'll stop there, but just simply to say that development on Old National's been a long time coming, and if you wanna look like all these other neighborhoods look that you covet so much, you gotta start somewhere. And I would really encourage people to go look and see how other commercial corridors have been redeveloped and what's there. Because if you want to look like these other neighborhoods, then you're gonna have to accept that you're going to end up looking like these other neighborhoods that you covet so much.
Councilwoman Willis?
I'm not gonna be long, um, I hear the passion, I hear the emotion, and I hear the hurt in your voice, um, Councilmember Williams, because I for one know that all of us on the city council put in over eighty hours a week to serve this city, and there's nothing wrong for wanting to bring quality to your area. When I was in college and used to visit Atlanta, I remember coming to quality businesses up and down Old National, and people often say they want Old National to go back to what it used to be, and you often says, you often say, it's not gonna go back to what it used to be. I'm striving to make sure it's better than what it used to be. And how you make things better than what it used to be is making sure that we have quality in accordance with our code. And I watched this hearing, and there was nothing said about quality. I didn't see a whole bunch of people show up with stickers and T-shirts to say they didn't want this quality business. And I'm just gonna leave it right there. I wanna thank you, Councilmember Williams, Mayor Pro Tim Will, Williams, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Williams, for advocating, and continue to do it, to bring quality, because Old National will not go back to what it used to be. I know Old National will be better than what it used I know Old National will be better than what it used to be. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pritchett?
I would like to say that I've lived off of Old National almost 20 years. And I remember when Walmart came, and Walmart was a big deal, because it was a big national chain. Before then, I do remember on the top side, which is part of College Park, where the Target sat there, it was, you know, closed. Old National has had a lot of great and good retail, and then it went away for one reason or another. And we have a lot of experimental mom and pop, you know, we just have the retail that we have. So, I think that when you have the opportunity to have a reputable national chain that has certain standards, certain quality of the products that they use, that we should look at those opportunities to brand ourselves, to have a better level of retail. And I think that having Valvoline would help with that credibility. I am in favor of this, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be saying that, but I'm in favor of having a reputable business that adds to our quality, and being a councilwoman that does represent the tail end, the smallest portion of Old National. I think that we ought to consider this type of development as being a positive for Old National. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
This is just a question for Mr. McLendon. The planning commission recommended denial, but I didn't see any notes in the documents that said the reason why. Are they not supposed to register notes as to say why they are against the development?
They don't have to, I believe. If there are notes as to their reasons for denial, they will be in the minutes that were forwarded, and I don't remember if there are any specific reasons or not.
Okay, it would have been nice to have that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to give you some reasons now, Mr. Sebastian. I am just a weak mayor. I don't get a vote normally. But when I did, I believe it was his exact same place, but you know, I can't say for certain. This was brought to me as a councilman, and I said no. There have been a lot of, the word "quality" has been used a lot, and reputable businesses have been used a lot. The reason that I said no was, number one, there are two places to get oil changes within 2,000 feet of this address. One is a corporate store, Walmart. I think they're known for quality and consistency. But more importantly, there is College Park Tire and Auto, which this June will be celebrating 31 years in business. This locally-owned, black-owned, father-and-son business offers the highest quality. I, the mayor, have been taking my car there since I could drive. They have also been a great corporate citizen, not only to the Old National Merchants Association, but to the Old National Knights, and several athletic leagues and schools up and down Old National. So, I just want to take a moment on camera to say, Mr. Thaddeus White and Lance, thank you so much for your quality, reputable service for 31 years. After I said no, I wrote a like-uses ordinance, because I think that we have quite a few places to get oil changes and tires and car service on Old National. It was watered down two zoning directors ago to this special permits thing. And so, if people are wondering why it is that we have all of these like-uses come back every month, even though we said we don't want like-uses, it's because of the way that our zoning ordinance is written. And before I leave office, I will do everything I can to make sure that it is written again. But I say all that also to say that developers will never give up giving us whatever they want to give us. And so, I want to thank also Mr. Venable and Mr. Reynolds for your decades of service on both the Fulton County and the City of South Fulton Planning Commissions, and your vigilance to make sure that the protections that we have put in place stay in place. And those are my comments. I see people are back in the queue, Councilwoman Willis.
They've been at that location?
Yes.
So, that will put me, what, at 17? And I recall when I moved to Atlanta, that place being a Goodyear.
It's, College Park Tire and Auto, or Goodyear Tire and Auto, has been owned by Thaddeus and Lance White for 31 years.
Yeah, but it was a Goodyear Tire. That was the corporate location. And then, I recall after Goodyear, they still sell Goodyear tires, but it was actually a Goodyear Tire location, because I recall going to that location when it was a Goodyear Tire and getting the warranties. So, and then it turned to all of the Goodyear, all of the Goodyear, what is it, the marquee and everything was removed, and then it turned into privately-owned College Park.
Oh, no, now it's Cooper tires. So, they always have a, they always have a corporate sponsor, but it's been owned by the same father and son for 31 years.
But it was not always owned by, it was Goodyear Tire at one point. It was, it was a franchisee of Goodyear Tire.
I don't know what to tell you. Lance and Thaddeus have owned it for the entire 31 years. We have the president of the Old National Merchants Association, he can verify.
Point of order, is this germane to this case?
I mean, I don't know, I'm just answering the question.
Yeah, I just was asking, that was a question, because actually, the mayor said that it was owned by this son and father, and I'm not disputing that, but I just recall it being Goodyear Tire, and it being marketed as Goodyear Tire, and me taking my car there, patronizing the business, and getting Goodyear Tire warranties, and Goodyear Tire being all over the paperwork, that's all. So, I'm not discounting them, and I praise them for being there. But I just, that was just a question I asked.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you for the additional information, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McLendon? At any point during this process, does staff look at things like, or is there data available that says, for the nearby businesses, what the wait time is like, or what people's service experience have been like, at all?
No, sir.
Okay. But the other thing that we need to keep in mind is that we have a growing city with a growing population. And while we may have two, there's nothing that says a third one cannot survive and everybody can't live. So, I kind of wish that we had known things like wait times, because all of that, to me, says whether we need another service or not. Not just that there are two, but what is the quality of the service like, and what is the wait times like? Because if I live in that area, and I have to go and wait half a day to get an oil change, I will sooner drive to someplace else to spend 20 minutes to get an oil change, maybe go to Fairville. So, I don't know if anything can be done, but that's the kind of information that I would find helpful. Thank you.
I do just want to add a point of clarity. I was saying there are two within 2,000 feet. There are 12 places to get oil change on Old National, but there are two within 2,000 feet. All right, seeing, oh, I'm sorry, you're not, you don't have your thing. Councilwoman Reese?
I just want to thank the business owners for 31 years on the corridor, and for being a part of the community. But I will say also too, is like, you know, competition brings competitive pricing. And so, but I do agree that we should revisit the like-uses ordinance as it should be an ordinance, and not for a special use permit, to get the things that we want to get in the corridor on Highway 279. And so, but I do thank the father and son for the longevity, and all the business owners of Old National, of the Highway 279 corridor, for staying and being a part of, integrated within the community and not leaving. So, I do want to thank them for that.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir. We're on item number four, it's a public hearing, Z23-002 and variance 23001. It's a request to rezone from MIX, Mixed Use Zoning District, to C2, to construct the 4,794 square-foot building with 96 parking spaces for the proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant. A variance is also requested to allow for a refuse enclosure within the 40-foot setback. And this is located at Highway 92 and Thompson Road, District 3.
All right, Mr. McLendon?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is V23-002 and V23, I'm sorry, Z23-002 and V23-001. A request to rezone property from the Mixed Use Zoning District to the C2 General Commercial Zoning District with a concurrent variance request to allow for a refuse enclosure within the 40-foot setback. The applicant is Chick-fil-A Incorporated, and the address is at Campbellton-Fairburn Road, also known as Highway 92 and Thompson Road. Staff recommendation is approval with conditions. Planning recommendation is approval with conditions. The condition being that the site shall be developed in accordance with the site plan entitled Chick-fil-A South Fulton FSU, Highway 92 and Thompson Road, South Fulton, Georgia, 30213, number FSU 05414, prepared by Bowman Consulting Group.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Mr. Clerk, were there any speakers for or against?
Yes, we do have some comments. I don't know if the applicant is here, though, or not.
I just wanted to make sure we had those, okay, and is the applicant here? All right, please come forth. Those of you all who are speaking for, you can line up on my left, your right. Those of you all in opposition can line up on my right, your left. We're going to put 10 minutes on the clock. As you've heard before, you may want to reserve some balance of your time for a rebuttal.
I'm Bridget Ganter, 950 North Point Parkway, Alpharetta, Georgia. We're from Bowman Consulting. We're the civil engineers representing Chick-fil-A for this site. Chick-fil-A is very excited to be coming to South Fulton. We needed to rezone to allow a drive-through. It was mixed zoning, which does not allow a drive-through. We've evaluated the area. I think I got it. Is that good? Okay. We had several community meetings. Councilmember Willis has been instrumental in helping us reach the community. We have complied with actually three conditions that Planning Commission and staff recommended. The first, as Mr. McLendon said, was to have site plan-specific zoning, and the reason we did this is to avoid a C2 zoning. Originally, staff recommended C2. Chick-fil-A does not care, it could be C1 or C2, but C2 prevents a automotive store coming in the future. The site will have to be rezoned because it is site plan-specific. The other conditions were to comply with a 15-foot landscape buffer. We have pushed the site back, so we do comply with that buffer. In addition, they recommended a 25-foot landscape buffer, just to comply with what was previously there. As part of GDOT's road widening plans and the roundabouts that are scheduled through 2025 for this area, we needed to move the site in anyway. So, we moved the site in, we have 27-feet buffer along Campbellton-Fairburn Road, Highway We have, we're asking for one variance, and that variance has actually decreased a little bit with our restructuring of the site plan. So, it's only, we have, we gained an extra foot and a half. So, the refuse enclosure will be on Thompson Road. It will be matched the building, it will look just like a part of the building, and it is heavily landscaped. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, any speakers in opposition?
Yes, we have two speakers who submitted comment in opposition, comment cards, Mr. Michael Venable and Alvin Reynolds. And if anyone else wishes to speak in opposition or in support, please stand up so you can be recognized. Thank you.
Michael Venable, 5720 Monteli Circle, District 6. This is not really what I would call an opposition. As much as I am passionate about Old National, I don't want to see this district being set up. If you all had to go to a conference, and there was a choice of a 12-passenger van or a 60-foot bus, you could take both, but the bus would be overdoing it. C2 zoning is overdoing this zoning. You can do everything that is necessary with a C1. Now, typically, what had always happened in the past is that we would recommend approval, substitute C1. But, you know, I guess things have changed now, so I don't know, not familiar with this, I got to go reevaluate myself to South Fulton's rules. The problem is, you have a C2, you've now opened the door for your gas stations, your liquor stores, these things that had these intense zonings. Now, they're doing what Old National used to do. Every single entity was site-specific. If I was zoned for Red Lobster, the zoning was specifically for Red Lobster. But we decided to get rid of that. Now that you're doing this one, it will work, but you, 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 a dangerous path. You've already allowed your property to go to C2. Nothing around there is C2. You've now an oddball in your plaza. So, my thing is, just to protect that community, the recommendation should be to recommend approval, substitute C1, so you eliminate all the problems.
Once again, Alvin Reynolds, 585 Kings Place, Riverdale, Georgia, District 7. I concur with Mr. Venable once again. We talk about these classifications. Chick-fil-A just stated in her presentation, they could have done the same thing at C1. C1 just simply protects the area from general development that any and everything can come in. This is what we're speaking of. And I'll say it, and I'll say it again. If it's just me coming before you with comments and statements, it'll be just me. I don't need 20 people behind me. Although I get a lot of comments and conflict from other people about certain developments, you got to, you cannot only think quality, you got to start thinking quantity in the areas that you're in. Everybody want quality, yes, we do. You have got to pay attention to these zone, zoning cases, these zoning laws, these ordinances. You cannot just dismiss them. We cannot become a city that the developers dictate to us what we want, what they want us to have. That's nonsense. Why do we have these things in place? Yeah, C1 for Chick-fil-A, love Chick-fil-A, not against Chick-fil-A. Matter of fact, I'm in favor of Chick-fil-A. But it's the zoning that's the problem. We got to get better at it as a city. Zoning, district overlays, identify an area. It gives an area its identity. District 2, Starbucks. District 3, Chick-fil-A. I'll leave you with that. I'll leave you with that.
Anyone else?
I did not receive any cards from anyone else. Anyone else needs to speak this evening?
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and open it for council comments, beginning with the district representative, Councilwoman Willis.
As the representative from Chick-fil-A stated, one thing about me is I do work with my community. And had a meeting with one of the major players and subdivisions in my community as recent as, well, really Monday and Sunday. And overwhelmingly, people welcome Chick-fil-A who live in that community, work in that community, and play in that community, which is our community. Staff recommended for them to have the zoning that is before us. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning that staff recommended. And the community, I'm sure, if need to, will bombard this council to let them know that they're in support of Chick-fil-A coming to their community. I appreciate everybody's opinion, but once again, this is a quality business that is known to not say thank you, have a nice day, but also is known to contribute to our area schools. You know, whether it's the band, whether it's the sports teams, they become fabrics in every community I've known them to be in. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bridget.
When I think of Chick-fil-A, I always think of customer service. When I go to other, um, retail, fast food, that's not fast anymore, and, um, I don't think of customer service. I think of Chick-fil-A as a model for customer service. So when a Chick-fil-, when it's presented that we can have a Chick-fil-A in one of our communities, I believe that it will probably foster a, uh, custom, customer services infectious. You know, um, customer service, cleanliness of lots, contributing to the community, and other businesses want to be around businesses that do well. Chick-fil-A's, wherever you go, lines are wrapped around the building, and people come in and go out, and come in and go out. So Chick-fil-A will bring better development. And I think that that's what the citizens really want. I think it's a, it's a big deal. Chick-fil-A is like a game changer. So to, you know, sometimes you have to look at whether you're right, wrong, you wanna split hairs on an issue, but the people, I'm certain that the people of District Three want Chick-fil-A. And I know that people from District Four, Five, Six will drive over to go to Chick-fil-A, 'cause I have to drive to District One for Chick-fil-A, or to another city, Camp Creek, for Chick-fil-A. So Chick-fil-A sounds like a good thing for South Fulton, District Three.
Councilman Reeves.
Although, um, the recommendation for the zoning classification, I got the point of that, but I do believe, um, this will be the second Chick-fil-A in the city of South Fulton, and closer to its corporate headquarters, worldwide corporate headquarters. And, uh, oh, and since I'm Four, Five, and Six, uh, we do wanna say, uh, Nikki Stedley said, uh, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, don't forget Chipotle, on this side, her too is coming. So, uh, we just wanna say that as well.
Uh, Mr. McClendon, I, I, I did wanna ask a question, if you will, um, do you have your phone on you? Just to, just to address, I guess, uh, Mr. Reynolds' comments, is it possible to put any sort of condition like that so that it's just for a restaurant in perpetuity? 'Cause my understanding is that the zoning travels, it transfers with the sale or whatever.
That is correct. Zoning does travel with the land, um, as an entitlement, uh, but when we, when you zone it to a specific site plan, uh, what it has the effect of doing is that if Chick-fil-A were to sell the property to a, a different owner, uh, then that owner would have to come back in and rezone the property again, uh, in order to develop.
But it is something that we could do. I don't, I don't think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think, if, if, if they build it, I haven't seen people build Chick-fil-A's and they disappear in a year or two, so maybe it's just something we wanna consider before we bring it back. All right, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Council, we're on item number five. It's a public hearing, request for alcohol license change of ownership for K S Fairburn LLC, doing business at Cedar Grove Valero, for an alcohol license for the retail sale of wine and malt beverages at eighty-seven zero zero Cedar Grove Road, Fairburn, Georgia, three oh two one three, located in District Four. Police.
Um, good evening, City Mayor, um, City Council. Um, the application for K S Fairburn LLC doing business at Cedar Grove Valero, um, located at eighty-seven hundred Cedar Grove Road, has met all legal requirements to obtain alcohol license at this location. Um, the applicant submitted a public safety plan in which it has been reviewed and approved, and this location previously held an alcohol license, and the staff recommendation is for approval. And we do have the applicant present this time.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. The applicant, you can go ahead and come forth. Um, as he's coming forth, Mr. Clerk, did we have any speakers for or against?
No, sir. No comments in support or opposition to this application.
All right, please go for it. Go ahead, sir. Yes, yes, it's your turn.
Oh, okay. That was, good evening, guys. Uh, I'm here on behalf of my dad. Uh, he's the owner, but he's out of country. Uh, he, uh, he's in India right now. So I'm here for the beer and alcohol license, uh, that is on Cedar Grove, uh, Valero. Uh, we just previously acquired last October, and, uh, we did this, uh, that's the idea. We had a business opportunity that we leaked into, and that's the idea, that's where we stand right now.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Thank you. What else do you need, Mike?
If you don't have anything else, that's fine. All right, uh, you may, may wanna stay here for questions, though. I'm gonna, uh, are there any speakers? I know that, that there are none that signed up. Any speakers in opposition? All right, hearing done, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open this up to questions from council, beginning with the district representative, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, sir. I've, um, looked at all of the documents, and you guys have checked all the boxes and the stuff, so I think it's, what, beer and wine, I think the, the license is for, so I don't, I don't have any issues at all. So thank you guys for doing business in the community.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, we're to the last case for this evening, is a public hearing, request for a new alcohol license for M R B Incorporated, doing business at the fifty-yard line, for an alcohol license for the consumption, sale of beer, wine, and distilled beverages at seventy-four ninety Old National Highway, Suite one hundred, Riverdale, Georgia, three oh two nine six. Staff recommendation is for the consumption, sales of beer and wine only, is located in District Seven. Police.
Point of order, Mayor. Is there any way you can explain to the applicants, um, that we don't vote? 'Cause I think a lot of the applicants are confused, and I know one approached me early and they thought we voted today.
It sounds like you've done it. Go, go, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, I'm addressing you, the chair, like I'm supposed to.
Okay, so, yes, we don't vote. Uh, we have a, we have a revised process, so we will vote on all of these items on March twenty-eighth. We just do the hearing today. Go ahead, Officer Esprit.
Yes. Um, so for the application for M R B Inc., doing business at the fifty-yard line located at seventy-four ninety Old National Highway, does not meet the legal requirements to obtain an alcohol license at this location. Um, this location previous alcohol license was revoked by City Council on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, for due cause, according to the Title sixteen of the City Alcohol Ordinance, Chapter Three, Section sixteen dash three zero zero one. Um, and according to the City Code of Ordinance, Section sixteen dash twenty fifteen, Section G, and state law, a licensee shall not have had an alcohol license revoked. Any alcohol licensed to sell alcoholic beverage issued by any government entity within three years preceding his or her application.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor, I'm sorry, open the public hearing. Uh, it looks like there is a lot of speakers for by the shirts that I see, so I, I will, we'll just call names so people don't have to line up. Uh, but we'll start with the applicant. You have ten minutes on the clock. I do, uh, you may want to reserve some of your time, uh, that is for you and all of the speakers and your rebuttal.
Good evening. Um, I appreciate you all. Um, and it's been a long day for you. I think you've been here since four o'clock, um, and I won't take up much more of your time. Um, I will start, um, from the end, I guess. I believe this council has the discretion and the authority to, um, well, I'll read it to you, to amend, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right. To amend, uh, any, any, uh, of the city ordinances and regulations. Uh, Section six, twenty twenty-eight of the, uh, City Code, uh, reads, "The city reserves the right and power pursuant to its police power after due notice to the company to mod-, modify, amend, alter, change, or eliminate any rules, regulations, fees, charges, and rates of city, and to impose such additional conditions that are not inconsistent with the rights granted by this chapter." Um, and it goes on, so, and, and I'll, I'll, um, make sure you all have that section. In other words, um, the ordinance in which, um, a, a, apparently the, uh, fifty-yard line does not meet, um, the guidelines, well, you have the power, inherent power and authority to override that. And I believe that's why we're here today. I'll start off a little bit, tell you a little bit about the owner of the fifty-yard line, uh, Ms. Harriet Bryant. First off, Ms. Bryant is a native of Fulton County. She attended Rosa High School here in, uh, in East Point, Georgia. And it's important to note that she's a Grady Bay. Now, uh, if that's not, um, Fulton County, then, um, nothing is. She is, uh, and, um, the mayor mentioned earlier that, and I, I think that is important as well, uh, he mentioned a black-owned business, um, C P Tire in Ottawa, has been in business for thirty-one years, um, whether it's franchisee of Goodyear or, um, however, that's, that's, um, constructed. Things are important to note that Ms. Bryant has owned and operated the Fifty-Yard Line Sports Bar and Grill for twenty-eight years. All right, that's almost three decades. Uh, she, uh, also owns the, uh, owns and operates the Grown Folks Cafe, which she's also done that for twenty-eight years, almost three decades. And I also think it's important to note that six of her employees that she currently has today have been with her for over twenty-five years. It's a quarter of a century, six employees, and that type of business, I think that's phenomenal. Hopefully you would agree with that. She was a former member of the Old National Merchants Association, recipient of the American Red Cross Award, recipient of the Georgia Outstanding Citizen Award from Senator Donzella James, who's present today. Thanks for being here. Um, also today, along with her, there's some other, and there, there are a lot of people here today, but I wanna mention, uh, Minister Kevin Smith, uh, of, uh, going to where they is, uh, World Changers, uh, Church International, also Emmanuel Rainey, who's the president of the Old National Merchants Association. They're here, um, all in support of, of, uh, Ms. Bryant and the Fifty-Yard Line receiving this, uh, alcohol license. Now, the, um, it, it's not just a, a sports bar and grill or, or restaurant, it's, say, she sponsors, uh, several of the local sports team's activities here in South Fulton. She's hosted Memorial Day giveaway and fed over two hundred people with community leaders multiple times. She holds repasses, sometimes, um, three times a week, and that's for, uh, Dutch Funeral Home and others, uh, as well. She, uh, hosts homeowners associations meetings, uh, on Saturdays, I believe that is, um, several other community events, graduations even, she's hosted there at the Fifty-Yard Line. Again, this is expanded over, um, almost three decades. Now, um, I, I believe at this point, sh-, the Fifty-Yard Line would be, and, and I'll go over some of the new changes, um, that's, that's, um, the business model, I'll say, um, here. But I believe it's the only sit-down restaurant, and that, that's the new thing, in District Seven. And if you'll allow me, Mayor and Council, I wanna pass out some of these packets.
Mayor, I just want you to remind him of the time. 'Cause you said ten minutes for the entire, and I just want, I don't know, I, it's a lot of community members here, unless we gonna suspend the rules so that we can allow, and I don't mind doing that, so we can allow the residents, some residents to speak.
Do I get back that? I appreciate that, and I, I'll be cautious with that. Do I get back that?
Well, we, we pause the clock. You're good.
Well, I saw it still running, it, it, time ticked off.
We'll, we'll probably suspend the rules, just keep going.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you for that. Um, and I, I'll get into, and this is, a lot of this is in your packet, I'll, I'll be fast, um, the new business model. First off, to begin with, there, there's a, 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 a safety plan has been submitted to the South Fulton Police Department. There'll be off-duty officers and sheriff personnel will be hired along with private security. Security updates have been, upgrades have been made to the surveillance camera system. The restaurant has added more lighting inside and transparent, uh, window storefront for increased visibility and safety. Before it was, uh, it was tinted windows, but now, um, and this is done for, to, to be able to see from the outside looking in, see what's going on in, in, in the location as well as inside looking out, to see what's happening. Ms. Bryant has in- invested over two hundred thousand dollars in upgrades to create a sit-down style restaurant environment for patrons that I alluded to earlier. There is a, um, the new business model is catered towards an emphasis on dining and sports viewing, again with the sit-down or take-out style customer base. The new business model also includes a breakfast brunch menu until two o'clock, two P M. That's every day, so you can go in and, and have breakfast there as well. The restaurant has over fifteen television screens for patrons to view sports broadcasts. There'll be soft music playing, no dance floor, high-top tables, and I think six to eight-person low tables for family and senior patrons. Finally, a ten percent discount, I think, which is important, will be offered to seniors, law enforcement, and first responders. I think that's an excellent idea. Uh, uh, you know, everyone wants a place to sit down and relax and, and chill, chill out, eat and drink in a safe environment. I think with these new changes, I think that'll be done. All right, and it's been, important to note, there's been approximately a year and a half since Ms. Bryant's alcohol license was revoked. That's two football seasons, two University of Georgia national titles, and then Atlanta Braves, where she, she missed all of that because of her license being revoked, and I will reserve, um, for the vote.
Mayor motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
I just want everybody to wait until I entertain the motion before we speak out of turn, but we have a motion to entertain the rules in a second. Mr. Clerk, uh, if, if, is there any discussion sitting now, please call the votes.
Discussion? Do we need to, um, I need to ask the- Do we need to, um, I need to ask the city attorney, do we need to be specific on how much time I wanna ask? Do, do we just suspend the rules to allow for additional time for each side? I just wanna make sure we're not breaking any laws.
Well, this is a zoning here, I mean, not zoning alcohol versus zoning, but for your purposes, if you don't wanna things to go on and on, you could specify time that way, you could.
Well, we have a lot of people here, and I don't want, I want people to be, have the opportunity to speak if they want to, so.
If, if that's the case, then council just recommend no time?
Okay.
I was just.
Thank you, he answered my question, Chair.
While we're still in discussion, I am going to recommend that we limit it to ten or fifteen minutes, keeping in mind, we do still have an hour or so of presentations from Parks and Rec and Earth Day, if we, if we wanna hear those tonight. Uh, we do have a, 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 another meeting to get back to. But your support visually is noted. Um, I will entertain a motion to amend the.
We, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor already.
Right. Did, I'm asking, did anyone want to amend it to include a time limit?
I'll take the mayor's recommendation to add additional ten minutes.
All right. Uh, there a second for an additional ten minutes?
Second.
All right. Uh, please call the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call vote to approve the amended, uh, agenda, I mean amended motion. Councilmember Rawl?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, uh, there, we're gonna put ten minutes on the clock. If everyone would like to, uh, you have speakers, you have a list of them, go, if you go ahead and call them out, uh, please be cognizant of the time. If everybody could keep their comment to around sixty seconds, everyone will get to speak.
First speaker is, is gonna be the distinguished Senator from District Thirty-Five, Senator Donzella James.
Point of order. We typically don't put time limits on elected officials. That's, that's, that was in our rules.
Again, I'm going to ask when people shout things out, if you would wait to be recognized. I will recognize your point of order, and of course, Senator James, you have as long as you would like as an elected official. This does not count against anyone else's time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, all the honorable City Council persons, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm State Senator Donzella James, and I have been working proudly. Long hours ever since January. We're on day number thirty-three of our forty-day session. And you don't count them, uh, one day at a time. You s- so many days a week, three days this week, three days next. So we have two more weeks to go. But I worked from seven o'clock this morning until I got here without stopping. And I came straight here because this is a very, very important issue to me. I'm proud that I was able to work for three years to try to, uh, put, uh, uh, on the ballot, uh, a referendum to make this the city of South Fulton, as you know. So I am really proud that the city is moving forward. But one of the things, I know that I don't have much time, so I'll just say that I am here for the, to say, please vote, uh, yes for the license for the fifty-yard line. Please find a way to, uh, negate, uh, any of the problems that have existed already because I have patronized the establishment for many years. And I can attest to the owner's honesty, integrity, and business acumen. I've never witnessed any wrongdoing whatsoever on any of her properties. And I've been, uh, the senator for a long, long time and proudly, and had, when she had the Club Ritz and the Frozen Palace. And so you know I go way back with you. And, and there were never any, any serious incidents. So again, I just wholeheartedly support, uh, the liquor license being awarded to the fifty-yard line. I have, uh, recently been going to the brunches because I think that I'm addicted, Mr. Mayor, to the chicken wings over there. They're so delicious. But, um, please allow them to continue to be community servants because that's what I see, uh, Harriet Bryant and the Fifty Yard Line has always been. Always supporting the different organizations in the community and always supporting the legislative things that we do. So we need, uh, more business people like, uh, Ms. Bryant. And I, I really, uh, would never have taken my mother, and she's ninety-two years old. She's been going for about twelve years now with me, or, to all of your different establishments. She loves to go. I cannot go there with her knowing without me taking my mother with me. And so you know I would not take her into a place that was not safe, secure, and wonderful. So please, Mr. Mayors and City, City Council Persons, please reconsider anything that has already happened and look at the fact that this is a good business owner. And this is what we, uh, I dreamed about South Fulton being. A place where you could live, work, and play and feel good and be able to go to a restaurant or sports bar in our community and not on the other side of town. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator James.
Thank you, Senator James, and thank you for your service. Mr. Clerk, uh, please call the next speakers.
Yes, as I call your name, please approach the center microphone and state your name and address. Uh, Ms. Marcia Ridley, Anthony Osborne, Emmanuel Rainey, and Kevin Smith.
My name is Marcia Ridley, and I live at twelve-eleven Merlin Avenue, southeast Atlanta, Georgia. And I wanna say thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak. I am here to represent my friend, uh, Harriet Bryant, who owns the Fifty Yard Line. She is generous, she's approachable, she's honest, she's patient, and most of all, she's a phenomenal woman. In the city of South Fulton, there are approximately about six hundred businesses, and my friend owns one of them. She's been there for twenty-eight years. Harriet has a diverse group of employees who she pays half of the healthcare insurance. In most cases, establishment like hers, they don't do that, let alone pay half of that. Harriet also helps the community economically by hiring people in the community. I stand today to ask you all to vote yes for Harriet to receive her license so that she can do business more effectively and attract more customers. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Osborne, and I, uh, am a citizen and resident of South Fulton. I've been here for twenty, uh, for twenty-three years. I came here in two thousand, uh, from Kansas City. And, uh, some of the remarks that were actually made, I was gonna, uh, provide a little bit of those remarks. And I think the, uh, attorney, uh, for the establishment, uh, said some things that, uh, was very cognizant of what I said. And, and the dear and, and honorable, uh, uh, Senator says some things, uh, that, uh, I also would not help a speaker duplicate. And it's actually, Senate Councilmember said one thing that I thought was very unique in the type of businesses that we wanted in the South Fulton area was a business that actually pointed out and established some quality. And I can remember, um, I have been a, uh, a partner, had a partnership, a business partnership with the, uh, the establishment with the Fifty Yard Line since, uh, two thousand and six. And, uh, I've known him to be very honest, and nobody has a, uh, in any bar has a perfect driven record, uh, depending on what type of clientele that you, that you actually are going to provide service for. But somewhere around the pandemic, they, uh, uh, initiated a large scale rehab of the facility to create a desirable character for the patrons and for the, uh, uh, urban carpet, uh, corridor of Old National. And they wanted to do that to stimulate that type of product for their, for their, uh, individuals that would be able to attend it. But suddenly what happened is that there was an intervention. And speaking of intervention, I can, um, can suggest that sometimes an intervention does not, uh, provide or implement a punishment, but it intervenes some sort of strategy of how to accomplish the objective of eliminating what we might call bad behavior. And I know from my association with them that they actually, uh, attempted to implement strategies to work closely, uh, with the city in order to implement those strategies to prevent that behavior. And I would think that instead of the intervention that says the difference between beer and wine and gin and juice, uh, I don't know the distinction, both of them are alcohol. And I don't know whether it's saying that beer and wine will cause less bad behavior and gin and juice will cause more bad behavior. I don't know what that means, but both of those items are alcoholic. I would suggest that we approve the City Council, approve and restore their liquor license. And that they would ask for the staff who made the recommendation to the City Council, that they would instead intervene and implement some strategies that will work with the merchants in the Old National area, work with the merchants to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to pre- to, 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 to prevent any type of behavior that is undesired. And as they said, uh, the, uh, uh, the council was a year, a year and a half for the, uh, license to have now been restored. They missed some of the major events out of Kansas City, they missed the Black Super Bowl.
Mayor, Council, always good to see you all here. Senator James, uh, I just wanna speak on behalf of the Old National Merchants Association. My name is Emmanuel Rainey. I currently serve as his president. I would like to for you all to consider, uh, Sister Brown and, uh, Sister Willis and everyone else, Dr. Rawl. For you all to consider, uh, Sister Bryant's, uh, liquor license. She has shown herself to be, uh, outstanding with character, uh, outstanding understanding of the community and being a part of the community. Though whatever situation may, uh, have happened, she stayed in there, stuck it out, and still serving the community as she has. So I think it's, you know, if you all can do whatever you can to consider her, uh, for her liquors and wine, beer and wine license, uh, please do it. Uh, we really think, uh, thank you and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, oh no, it's evening now. It's a pleasure to be here, uh, for these number of hours. I've learned a lot. You guys are really dedicated, uh, mayor, council, uh, senator. My name's Kevin Smith. I don't live in South Fulton, city of South Fulton, I actually live in Fayetteville. But I've been a business owner in, uh, was Fulton County back then, incorporated Fulton County for two decades. And, um, I come to know Harriet, uh, as a woman, a Christian woman, a woman of integrity, a woman of fiber. And I'm here to talk about what she's done for the youth and how she has just been an awesome contributor. I'm a founder of a, uh, young entrepreneur mentoring program. We teach these young men things that they wouldn't learn in school, public speaking, financial literacy. We give them scholarships to go to college. And the Fifty Yard Line has, excuse me, been by far the largest business contributor to our organization. She is on our, uh, website, and she just represents the fiber and legacy of youth integral, and I'm proud to call her a friend. And we just, uh, the Restoration Community Resources Entrepreneur Program just, uh, would not be the same without her loving, kindness, giving, caring person as she is. So just ask that you would, uh, see it in your hearts to, uh, restore her license.
Thank you. We have two additional speakers, Yvonne Boom and Kalisha Kristen Roberts.
Hi. My name is Yvonne Cole Boom, a resident of Oakley Township in D-seven. I'm here to support the request for a new alcohol license for the Fifty Yard Line. The Fifty Yard Line is the only sit-down dining experience in D-seven. I'm gonna say that again. The Fifty Yard Line is the only sit-down dining experience in D-seven. I discovered this hidden gem when I attended the watch party for my councilwoman, Linda Pritchett. The food provided by the Fifty Yard Line was delicious. Pulled pork sandwiches, baked beans, wings.
Don't do all that now, come on now.
However, the one thing missing was a nice drink. An IPA or a glass of Pinot Grigio or a shot of tequila to mark the celebration and ultimately the victory of Councilwoman Pritchett. After the watch party, my husband and I, my daughter and her husband, my neighbors have become patrons of this establishment. As we enjoy the superb cuisine and the affable and pleasing customer service, we deserve to have a full dining experience, which includes the option of a libation. We, you, need to support black excellence, which brings black joy.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Kalisha Kristen Roberts, and I've got like thirty minutes, thirty seconds to speak. So I moved to South Fulton in two thousand and eight, and I moved here from the Vinings area in Marietta, and then after living there, I lived in Brookhaven. And since we've moved here, we've kept a lot of the relationships that we had in the past. We don't wanna travel to our friends' areas to go have drinks with them. We want, when they come to visit us, they sit down and have a drink with us. We wanna show them the pride that we have here in South Fulton. I appreciate that, thank you. I am very proud of my area. I'm very proud of South Fulton. I'm proud of the faces that I see around me and every, all of you that are sitting here on this City Council and coming from Little Rock, Arkansas. That was a dream that I could not accomplish, which is why I chose to move. I also chose to move to South Fulton because I love my people and I want to support my people. I truly believe in us and the progress in that, and my husband does as well. He came here from Chicago, Illinois, which is, we all know is a bar and club city. And so they love to celebrate with sports. I don't wanna have to go to another city to have our celebrations, and I don't wanna have to go anywhere else. I love this sister here, I appreciate everything that she has done, and I appreciate all of you. I thank you all for hearing me out, and with that, I now retire.
All right, there are no comments in opposition. Our clerk lets me know, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for brief, brief, uh, questions and comments from, uh, council, beginning with our, uh, district representative, Councilwoman Pritchett.
I would like to say that when, um, a business like the Fifty Yard Line that has existed for over twenty-eight years, when a business like that, if they're not able to operate and they're not, they're not able to operate how they used to in terms of having a liquor license, they lose revenue. And, um, losing revenue is not what we all are in the business of doing. People go into business to be profitable, and the more profitable you are, the better quality of service you can provide to your community and to your patrons. So although there were issues that occurred in the past, from what I understand, um, I think that it speaks. I think that it speaks volumes when a business owner invests the type of money that is indicated here in our packet, that this business owner has invested in making corrections, making corrections on their own without having to be, you know, these corrections prescribed by the government that they have to, that they're dealing with. When someone changes their business model and in a way to reach out a different market, to avoid the pitfalls of the past and especially when people in the community like it, you know. It is true that this is the only sit-down restaurant in District Seven and the people like it. You see all these people of, could I ask if you all withstand everyone who's here in support of the Fifty Yard Line that has come today? So this is overwhelming support, well, this is big support. And I think that that's something to be said about about this business. All the people that have spoken are prominent from our state senator. And here, I did receive a letter in in our packet. We have a packet from our state representative, Chairman Josh Bonner, who is, who is in favor, who he said he's expressing his support for Ms. Bryant and her request to obtain a liquor license. He's known her for almost twenty years and she is an individual of the highest moral character. She has invested a great deal in the Old National Corridor and has always been a strong advocate in the community. And he strongly urges the council to approve the request so that she can continue to operate in her business. So I would hope that my colleagues would take account of the totality of the situation, of the totality of what was said here today and make a decision that would be in the benefit of District Seven and the city of South Fulton.
Dr. Rawl.
I've heard a lot and I've seen the amount of community support that's come out for this project. But I do have some questions and I don't know if it's the police chief or who is over alcohol. I know this is the first time we've dealt with this kind of situation. And so I'm just sensitive about how we move forward. Have you all looked at this and what does it mean? Because I know we've taken alcohol license from other people. And so I'm, I'm wanting to know what the precedence might look like.
The South Fulton Police Department has looked thorough into this situation. Like you mentioned, this is the first time we've been faced with a situation like this. However, we do have to make sure, you know, as a police department and city, that we're making sure we follow all state laws as it pertains to this situation as well.
That's nice.
With the, with the city ordinance that, as it relates to the alcohol ordinance as well.
Good, Dr. Rawl, could I?
Can I just ask one final question? So does that mean there requires an amendment or like, what does that mean? I'm not clear.
So as the ordinance stands right now, they would not even be entitled to the beer and wine license. So it would take an amendment in the ordinance on behalf of the body to go back and change that. Attorney said earlier, certainly that's within your purview to do that. But we also want to take a look at the history of that particular establishment as well. Just to ensure that we're not repeating anything as we move forward.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hop in and just ask, just offer a point of order. And please disabuse me of this if I am wrong, City Attorney Hyman. But my understanding is that perhaps an alternate solution, not doing something as drastic as amending the ordinance. But since a vote was taken, I do believe that anyone in the affirmative could make a motion to reconsider the revocation. Would that be allowed without actually changing the ordinance?
I'm not sure where the idea of having to amend the ordinance comes up. Under our alcohol code, what happens is that when you've had your previous alcohol license revoked, then technically you're not eligible for reconsideration. Well, it says it can be a grounds for denial, but it says maybe a grounds for denial. And the way our process works is that alcohol licenses are given on a yearly basis. So it's been a year. So at this point in time, the police chief has no other means other than says that I have to come forward with the denial because of the ordinance. Now you can, you don't have to, because you make a recommendation. Hearing decide what you want to do with that recommendation. But it just says under sixteen, twenty twenty-one, that revocation by applicant within three years of the date of the application will automatically be grounds for denial. But it doesn't say that. So it's a grounds for denial, but you take recommendation at that point in time. You vote on whether or not she wants to accept the recommendation or not.
All right, but again, since we took a vote, people in the affirmative, can they make a motion to reconsider?
But you're not voting tonight. That's the point.
No, no, I'm saying, but, but, right, we're not voting tonight. But I'm saying on the twenty-eighth, when we vote, can someone who voted in the affirmative make a motion to reconsider the revocation?
I don't understand the question. No? No, couldn't.
Okay, thank you. I yield back to you, Dr. Rawl.
Yes, I, I guess I want to hear and I understand we may not get, I'm assuming we won't get to it tonight. I just want more clarity, because I'm not clear, about what we can do at this juncture and how. So that's, that's what I need.
And as the attorney said, the way the ordinance is structured now, we have to go by, as Lieutenant said, the ordinance and the way that it reads. And, you know, there's no legal requirement, I mean, they don't make the legal requirements at this point.
I don't have any further questions. I think we just need to.
All right. Well, well, I will say, Councilwoman Willis is next. And in her wisdom, she has split up, or she, she, she didn't split up, but she asked for us to split the hearing from the vote. So we do have two weeks to talk and figure out what can be done. We don't have to figure it out tonight. Councilwoman Willis.
I don't want to make this complicated. And Chief, I, I respect you, but at the end of the day, the city attorney and according to my research, the discretion of whether or not we accept your recommendation and we decide to reissue the beer, wine and distill, in distillery, it rests with this council. Now, I'm going to say this. I was, and it had nothing to do with the twenty-eighth, the vote on the twenty-eighth was the twenty-eighth. So we go, let's just leave that vote where it is on the twenty-eighth. We're talking about here now, today, two, almost three years out of a pandemic. And if it's one thing that I have learned going through this pandemic and going through personal trauma, is grace and mercy. And I've had an opportunity to talk with the business owner. I have not gone to the brunch because I want to keep this ethical. But I've had an opportunity to visit the establishments and the investment and the strides that she has made and put into to change the culture, to change the business. I, I, I commend her. And I was on the side that upheld the revocations. And then, and I stand by what I did on the twenty-eighth because there were things that were presented to me that, you know, that I felt that should have, you know, should not have happened. But we are here today and we're here now. And if I'm going to be consistent, when in my district, when there was a establishment that was not doing the right thing and they came before me and the recommendation was to revocate, there was a tremendous amount of community support that came out and supported that business. And as a result of that, I stood down. And it's very hard for me to go against the community. It's very hard for me to know that, you know, we have a new, we have new leadership in that area. And that person who has been working well with this council and who has been working with me has said, this is the only sit-down establishment in my district and I would like to have the opportunity to work with this business owner. And have said, come visit this business and come look at it and see the strides and see the changes. And I've had an opportunity to talk with the business owner. And there are some things that has happened that I'm going to be honest with you since the revocation and I'm not very pleased with. I'm not. But I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus. I do respect you, Chief. I do respect the officers, but I do believe in grace and mercy. And I'm inclined to not go against, when you have this many community members that show up and say they want this business in their community, who am I to tell them no? When I had to go against the, the business in my community because they had a lot of community support. So your recommendation is what your recommendation is and I'm not going to ask you to change your recommendation, but the decision rests with this body.
I've just, I've, I've just been told, Councilwoman, that the state law requires two years once the revocation. And so I don't think that we can, I don't, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to the city attorney.
So Chief, I have, I called the state and guess what the state said? I talked to the state, I called alcohol licenses and the state said that they move how we move if we are the ones who revoked it. The state said if they revoked it, then you follow the state guidelines. But the state said if we, the municipality revoked it, we have the right to, to, to reinstate it and they move how we move. They didn't revoke it, we did. And I asked, and I talked to the state and that's what the state alcohol licensing agent told me. Councilmember, you were on the phone. Did you hear that? Because I, I was, it was a conference call with the state alcohol licensing agent. And she said that they, once the process goes through and once the municipality makes a decision, they move based off of what we do. They do, they, they do what we do. Now, if they revoked it, then it's problematic. And this is speaking from somebody that very seldom goes against you. And this is speaking for somebody who voted to, in favor of revoking this license. But when you have this many residents, and I respect my constituent, Senator James, but she knows that even residents matter and their opinions matter. And you have this many people show up begging for this establishment. I just, you know, it's going to be hard for me to go against that. I don't go against T-shirts and stickers.
Councilwoman Pritchett, this is your second time. I'm sorry, are you done, Councilwoman Willis? Councilwoman Pritchett, this is your second time.
So I have a few questions for a few individuals. So, uh, well, Chief, I guess I could ask you. In, since that time, have you had any incidents or any reports of incidents that specifically came from that establishment since that time?
We have had some incidents that has occurred there. I believe it was after business hours, but we have had.
So it's not related to that business during its operation?
Um, no, but it was just on a.
That area?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and I'd like to ask a question of the owner of Ms. Harriet Bryant. But thank you, Chief and Lieutenant.
Um, just before your question, I just wanted to piggyback off City Council, Willis, on how it works as far as with the state. The state will, of course, they did not revoke the business license because they did not, they wasn't responsible for the details. But it's the responsibility for the local to communicate with the state as well as the state to communicate with the local. So, I mean, they wasn't responsible for revoking that license, but the local do communicate with the state in sense of what's going on with the alcohol.
A point of order, please.
Yeah, yeah, with, with all due respect, we have to address the person who has the floor. And so now, Councilwoman, we can't go back or we'll never get to this part's presentation. But did you have any more questions?
Yes, I do, for Ms. Bryant. So Ms. Bryant, what, what are your operating hours currently?
Nine, nine AM to seven, to seven PM.
To seven PM?
Yes, six days a week.
Six days a week? That means Monday, that means what?
Monday through Saturday or close on Sunday.
Now, since, since you have not operated with a liquor license, how much money have you lost in, that you would estimate in revenues have you lost because you have not sold alcohol?
A lot of money, over a million dollars or more, better, yeah.
So are you, are, so how long would you be able to continue in business, operating as you are? How long will you be able to operate in that fashion if you did not have a liquor license?
I, I cannot afford to operate. I, I've had to do, tap into things that I wouldn't ordinarily have to do to sustain my restaurant for a year and a half.
Now, this is not to shame you or anything, but at this time, are you even profitable?
No, not.
So what is it or what is your reason for wanting to continue, to continue?
Well, my character, my integrity is the most important thing to me. So when, when this all happened, it was a slap in the face for me, which was a year and a half ago. Nothing, no one has been arrested, nothing happened. I just felt like someone should have come to me if there was a problem and had a conversation with me and that didn't happen. So the fight was on to, I didn't do anything wrong. I operated a business for nightclubs on Old National for twenty-eight years. So for me to be knocked down like that, put to shame as if I've done something wrong, that was not going to happen. We, we continue to operate because we have a name to protect. Whatever happens at the Fifty Yard Line, it all ultimately comes down on Harriet Bryant. So it was important for me to continue to do what I do and not just be knocked down and stay down.
Now, have you been asked to make any, have you been given any recommendations or advice to make any changes like to management? Or like have you had to step in the role of management yourself or like who helps you operate your business?
My sisters. And I have, I've kept on a lot of my staff members that have been with me for twenty-five plus years because they have families to feed. So I have to make that happen for them.
So to be entirely clear, the way, are you operating the Fifty Yard Line as the way that you operated it in the past? Do you have the same patrons? Do you have the same business model? Is it the same? You're just going along the same path or are you?
No, no, we made quite a few changes. We've, we first started out doing the breakfast to invite different type of people in in the daytime. And we are ecstatic because we have a, a whole new community of people that come out sometimes three, four days a week to, to dine with us. We are like cheers, you know, we, we know, we know all the people. They come in, some people come in every day to, to eat with us. And that's, that's important to, to be able to be there for the people and, and we're like a family. So I've made the changes so I can sustain what I've built. And so with me closing early, you know, if I'm granted my liquor license, I will, you know, not stay up until three AM. I'm a breakfast sports bar and I am there to service the community. We've brought in lower table seatings for families that come in. It's just a, it's a fun place to be and we have really good food.
So you also, you know, the, the, the safety concerns in the area, are you planning to hire security or?
Yes, definitely. Well, I spoke with Lieutenant Esprit and Chief Meadows. They came out to visit the establishment to see the changes. They came out to visit the establishment to see the changes that were made. And there were recommendations of things that needed to be changed. And of course I was on board with that, you know, because I have a reputation to uphold. This is my business and like I said, everything that happens, it falls on me, not the 50-yard line, I am the 50-yard line. So I've made the changes that I need to make to be successful.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bryant.
Dr. L, this is your second time. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
This, I'm not sure if this is a question for Harriet or for Chief Meadows, but in our packet, I don't see, well, it's two questions in our packet, I don't see a safety plan. Have, have we confirmed that there is a safety plan on file? And I guess part B of that question, is it adequate?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, what was your second question?
I said, do we have, is, do we have a safety plan? Cause I don't see it in the packet and the second question was, is the safety plan adequate?
Um, the answer to your first question is yes and the answer to your second question is yes, and I do have it present.
Okay. Um, my second question and again, I'm not sure if this is for you or for Harriet. The liquor, the revocation of the liquor license was originally because of drug activity in the 50-yard line. Does this safety plan include steps that are going to be taken to prevent that from happening again? Because, you know, I, I realize, or at least I'm hearing that it's within the purview of the council to reinstate the license, whatever the mechanism is to have that happen if that's what we so choose. But I'm asking this question because, you know, we had whatever was before Mingles, where there was the similar problem, right? With the drugs and other activity that should have been happening. Close, lost the liquor license, business closed down, reopened is Mingles and now we're back there where we're once again having the exact same problem. And granted, you, I, I realize that you cannot control what everybody does all the time.
Point of order, don't mention another business in this.
What is your point of order, Councilwoman Willis?
Uh, I just wanted us to be cognizant of bringing up another business.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, I, I want to be sure, relatively sure that we're not gonna, if we reinstate this license, it's not gonna be a repeat where the drug activity is going to go back in and we'll be back here having to revoke it in another year or so.
So to answer your question on that, according to the public safety plan, the security staffing, do you use licensed security guards? If so, how many, how often on a premise? Are they trained in-house or by a company? If they were trained by a company, please provide the names and name of the company. And do you employ off-duty South Fulton PD officers? If so, how many and how often? The response to that was yes, we use licensed bonded professional security companies that provides training to their staff. They are on a premise seven days a week. Two officers will be outside and Harriet could confirm on that one and two certified security guards on the inside. At this time, we are interviewing several, several professional security companies to handle seven days a week of operation. And we will employ South Fulton PD officers, one officer, seven days a week. So she could piggyback on that.
Oh no, she answered my question.
Okay. Councilwoman Willis, this is your second time.
Um, and so the city of South Fulton is not going to, I mean, we gotta take every situation on a case-by-case basis. What happened on the 28th happened and it happened for a reason. And I'm not gonna sit here and what the facts that were presented to us were the facts that were presented to us. I, I am gonna give a little pushback and Ms. Harriet, you were approached about what was happening in the past. And now whether or not you were given the opportunity to correct, you know, but you were approached about it because you talked with me about it and you, you had humility about what happened and that's why you went, that's why you made the changes you made, which is good changes. And that's why you made the changes you made and you said that you are not going to do the things to attract the element that was once in the past and you weren't aware of how the previous management was running the business. You even said to me that you, the person that was running the businesses in the past would not be running the business going forward. And so what I would like to do is just leave the past where it was and let's move forward. And, you know, I think the community has spoken that they really want this business to come back and, you know, this, this council here and sees the community support. And as far as the state, I just want to make it clear that in no way am I saying that our police officers don't know what they're doing or Mrs. Esprit, you don't know what you're doing. All I'm just expressing is the conversation that I had with the state agent. And what she said is that when the agent said that when the, it's the municipality who revokes the license and if they don't have any outstanding issues on the state side, they typically wait until the municipality adjudicates, makes a decision, and then once that information is uploaded into the system, once it gets to the state side, they research to make sure there's no issues on the state side. And if it's not, they pretty much follow the recommendation from the city. That's all I was saying. So I know you work hard, you do your due diligence and I know we have ordinance, but at the end of the day, that's why people elect us because we are the governing authority and we do have a right to make decisions. And in some cases, not in all cases, we do have a right to, you know, have the final decision. And in this case, according to what our attorney appined, we, we can make the final decision. The chief has to follow his recommendation, this is recommendation is based off of the ordinance. So don't be mad at the chief because he has to do what he has to do based on our code of ordinance. But that's why he makes the recommendation to us and it's up to us to take the recommendation or it's up to us to make the final decision. And, and, and that's just that.
Councilman Reeves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. And I will say to our police department, to our chief and to the young lady for alcohol, who's over alcohol licenses, they have a process, they have procedures and they have protocol that they follow. And I support that and I support it all the way. But in certain situations, our job as a city is to support those who through rain, sleet, hail, snow, through the changes from the good and the bad, stayed planted and rooted into the community for almost three decades. Not only, not only operating one business, this is what we're talking about, but to a young lady who has a conglomerate, which is a brand that has different brands underneath it, which on the Highway 279 corridor, it's historic. As, this is just one particular business and considerations, in my opinion, should be giving them more due process and then getting here and having someone who has been committed to the vitality of this community, of this city, just certain things for those who've been here for the overhaul and longevity should be given. And as a matter of fact, if you would turn to your work session on our meeting agenda, our mission statement says to provide exceptional customer service that sustains a safe, inclusive, innovative and an economically vibrant city. And economically vibrant is we must enhance the economics of the entrepreneurs within the ecosystem of the city limits of South Fulton to maintain that vitality in the vibrant city that we so want, particularly to the community that this is just a snapshot representative of what this establishment, establishment means to so many people. As I was 17 going on 18 when it first opened and I couldn't get in. But I now go get that fish sandwich and it's outstanding. And, and we actually held an event there as well. And I just says, we just owe it to our, to the people and particularly anybody who knows me knows a woman entrepreneur along the Highway 279 corridor is special to me, have a special place in my heart for obvious reasons. And I'm just saying that it is something that we should take a deeper dive into in this case, one case scenario. And that's all I have to say. And I support decision that the majority of this Diaz would come to after in-depth discussion and due process due to an entrepreneur who has longevity, who has history with this city and this community.
Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I am not a drinker. As a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, I had dinner with some friends and I had Heineken And my, my colleagues are laughing because I texted them afterwards to say, you know, made me feel a little funny, then they said, Jesse, it does have a little alcohol in it. But that doesn't mean that I don't have to make an independent impartial decision whether, whether or not I personally support alcohol drinking. I've been to the establishment a few times over the years and I want to say as I know the owner, I know the Senator, and I just want to say for the record, at no point did I ever receive a call to say, you need to do this. And I want to thank them for playing by the rules and by the book. I support, I support our laws of the city. I make no bones to say all the time that the police and the fire department were chief among the reasons why we created the city of South Fulton. And I support our police chief and the women and men of our department. Seems as if we are faced with a case that is a little bit unusual. And so what I personally would, would like to see before we vote at the next council meeting, I actually want to see the parties get together again and come up with a plan as to how we move forward in the future. And even if it has to be a period of monitoring, if we approve granting the license back. Because something led us here and I don't want us to forget that piece. There's a reason why we're here now and I wasn't here when that happened and I've read a few of the things. But I also want us to keep in mind that this person is a longstanding member in this community. And, you know, when you, when you even have the church coming out and lobbying for this establishment, it says something. So just want to thank everyone for the community for coming out and showing your support for this business owner. So again, I really want to see the parties get together and say, if the council approved this, what is the plan and present that plan before we have to vote next meeting? Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna close out with this. I was here two years ago and I feel compelled to put these comments on record. Revocations have consequences. I was vehemently opposed to this revocation a year and a half ago and stridently support the reinstatement today and my reasons are connected. This is the only revocation that we had where we had one hearing. Everyone else that we revoked had us, had at least one chance to do a security plan. We gave them a second chance. This was the only person, we made this revocation in an election year and gave this person no second chance. And the basis of the revocation weighed heavily on the investigation and the testimony of an officer who has since been terminated for the way that she conducts her investigations, which some might say puts a cloud over everything that she did. So for those reasons, I think that it's very important that we reconsider these things. And Mr. Hyman, I am going to ask for a written opinion about whether or not a motion to reconsider can be made because this is the first time I've heard that when people vote in the affirmative, they are denied a motion to reconsider. So if that is the case, and if it's just for zoning hearings or whatever is the case, then we just need to make sure that we have a written legal opinion about that. So the next time we make such a motion, people know that they are foreclosed on bringing it back for reconsideration later. And with that, we have reached the end of this agenda. We do have council comments before we return to our, our, our work session. Although I am not clear that the people that were speaking at the work session are even still here. Are they still here? Okay, will you, will you, will you grab them? And we'll begin those council comments with District One, Dr. L.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. We have the power of compliance that the code enforcement is launching in partnership with various departments in the city of South Fulton. It will be held on March 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Southwest Arts Center. In, in addition, on April 8th, we have the Easter egg hunt at Sandtown Park from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. We want to encourage families to come out and bring their young children to take advantage of the activities that our Parks and Rec staff have planned.
Actually, could you, could you hold one more? Cause I think you're making important announcements. We're gonna let everybody clear the room. If you could just exit as quietly as possible, we do still have a meeting in progress and there are folks still on camera that are interested in hearing these announcements. I'm putting your Easter egg, I'm putting your Easter egg hunt in my calendar, Dr. L. Would you just repeat that, that time again for us, please?
The Easter egg hunt will be from 11:00 to 1:00 PM at Sandtown Park. It's hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm sure they'll have amazing afternoon activities. We want to encourage families to come out on that day on April 8th. And on March 30th, we had a power of compliance, which citizens will be able to come out to meet with department heads, department heads and staff from across the city and ask questions about various services we provide. So we want to encourage you to come out. That's at the Southwest Arts Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
All right, thank you. District Three, Councilman Willis?
The only thing I want to make sure and in most, in all of the District Three residents got the postcard by now, but we are having a public safety town hall with our police chief, our sheriff, Sheriff Labott, and our fifth district commissioner. And I will be facilitating a discussion for public safety. I would ask all to attend, it's gonna be at Friendship at 6:00 PM on March 23rd. If you're not getting If you're not getting my emails, please subscribe at four-two-eight-two-eight, four-two-eight-two-eight, Helen, uh, dot Willis at cityofsouthfulton.g a dot gov. Helen dot, I mean, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's District Three, four-two-eight-two-eight, District Three. And make sure you, uh, subscribe to my newsletter. My email is Helen dot Willis at cityofsouthfulton.g a dot gov. You can also send me an email there to, uh, be added to my distribution list. And, um, we have four developments that are proposed to come to District Three. And, um, I would ask that you all, um, if you're not getting my emails, get my emails. The developers are mailing out notices within a mile or a half a mile radius. So if you may not get the notice if you don't live in a half a mile, a mile radius, but some of these developments do impact the Welcome Mall area, the Cliftondale area. So don't show up when it goes through the process. We need you to show up now before some of it had, zoning applications haven't been filed. Some of them applications have been filed. So please be cognizant of my emails and, um, show up for the meetings when we have the meetings on development. And if you see something, say something. See, click, fix, call. See, click, fix, get a ticket number, or either load your information up through the app and get a ticket number. And if you don't get a response in a reasonable time, please forward that ticket number to your council persons so that they can send that information over to the city manager to have your info, um, to have your concerns addressed, and especially litter. We have so many litter, so much litter in this city because people are not reporting the litter. Thank you so much, and, um, have a good evening.
District Four, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening once again, everyone. Um, just want to remind the community and thank the police department as well for putting this on. They'll be over here in, um, District Four this Thursday at Jolly's Sweets and Treats in the City Grove Village Shops Plaza from ten A M. till about one-thirty for a coffee with a cup. That sounds like a little bit lunch to me, peeling, so, if we may have, we take the food. And so please come out and bring your public safety concerns and also, um, meet the men and women who, um, not only patrol your department, but will be there for you in the time of need when you have, um, emergencies. Just want to remind the community again about our next town hall. It's going to focus around economic development and infrastructure. Mr. Valenzuela, our Public Works Director, Mr. Artie Jones, our Economic Development Director, and Mr. David Clark from Fulton County will be joining us, um, as well to discuss sewer, um, for the area. Also on the program is, um, our own Reginald McClendon, who would be, um, talking about the activities of C D I R A. So that's on the twenty-third of March at Fire Station Eight, I think it's eighty-six, seventy-five Ridge Road, um, in, um, the lovely District Four. And again, um, I want to look, I want to ask the community to keep a watch out for our, um, Earth Day cleanup event of City Grove Park. It's planned for April twenty-second. Watch out for more information around that. Again, thank you for your continued support and for your encouragement. And, um, thank you to those of you who came out, um, recently at the Sanitation Town Hall as well. And if you do not receive the newsletter, please send an email, j a c e e y dot s e b a s t i a n at cityofsouthfulton.g a dot gov. Thank you, guys.
District Five, Councilman Ruiz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one is, I just want to send a shout out to my partner in crime, and so, uh, Miss General Leverett. And so it's, uh, we, we're together as a team and getting things done. And so I really appreciate, uh, all the work she does, uh, for the community as well. Uh, and I would be remiss to join us each and every Monday night at six-thirty, uh, as we do the call with the community, as this past Monday, we started on the topic of zoning. And we're going to continue down that road, because I'm just, join the call and be interactive as this is your time to have your voices heard. Tuesday, there is going to, from six to eight P M. at the Burdette Multipurpose Room. It's a police and code enforcement, uh, and a safety meeting. So, uh, do come out for that, um, as we would love to have you. And we're going to have a meeting on how to interact with press giveaways, uh, from Jacobs. And so, um, just participate as much as you can, if we would love to see you live and in person. And there was something else, but doesn't matter. I love you, you can't do nothing about it. And, uh, until we meet next time.
Thank you. District Six, Mayor Proton Williams Brown.
Yes, thank you. Um, on next Tuesday, District Six will, I will be hosting a town hall for District Six, actually here at Welcome Mall, because that's where I could get the space, but actually here at Welcome Hall in, um, partnership with Commissioner Marvin Arrington. He has been doing, um, a series of meetings to inform and educate, um, residents about the homestead exemption. And so this will be District Six's chance to get that information as well as to ask any questions, um, about that. And so that information will be, um, hopefully in your email box tomorrow morning, um, so that you will have, you'll have all of the details. But, you know, please do tell a friend, tell a neighbor, tell three enemies, two friends, and one whatchamacallit, um, that to please come next, um, Tuesday here to Welcome Mall, um, to get, to hear and to get this very important information about your homestead exemption.
District Seven, Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Well, I'd like to say that first, um, I am very sad about the unexpected, um, sudden passing of my state representative and my really dear friend, Tish, State Representative Tish Nagisi. She died last week unexpectedly. She survived by her husband, um, and an entire community that just adored her for, um, being a hard worker, a really good person, someone that everyone liked and loved. And so I just want to honor her, and I appreciate her, um, for coming, supporting me, coming to my meetings, coming to our council meeting, and just being someone that is going to be sorely and dearly missed. So we miss you, Tish, um, and you'll always be with us. I also would like to announce that on April first, I will be hosting a food truck madness, which will be at the end of March Madness in the Tri-County's, uh, station, which is the parking lot where there's Fit Gym, uh, Family Dollar in the fifty-yard line. There are going to be food trucks, um, there's going to be a lot of activities, a lot of fun. Uh, we are looking to have spades tables, bidwiz tables, um, police, fire, and public works will have booths. So people will have an opportunity to get information that they need and, uh, be in contact with city, um, officials. There also will be an opportunity for you all to get a lot of information from the city, have free snack packs, music, entertainment. So I hope that you come out for the championship series, um, at the Tri, oh, the time, um, goodness, let's see, when is the time? I think it will, um, it's going to be from three to six P M. So it's an outdoor event, so this is going to be a lot of fun. So it's going to be a family fun event. It's going to be my first big event, um, of this type, so I hope that you all will come out and support. We'll really be excited to see you.
All right, thank you. Uh, this Saturday, we will be having our third mayor's brunch. We're going to be in District Four this time at Mustard Seed. Uh, you can text the word brunch to five-five-four-four-four to R S V P. We are, uh, I'm, I'm trying to think about how to say this. Uh, Georgia Power through the Department of Community Affairs has forty-four million dollars in utility assistance to give out, and they have to give it out by March thirty-first. Uh, you can text the word Fulton to three-three-seven-seven-seven. Uh, there will be an email going out, uh, tomorrow with information about that. And to facilitate that, we will be partnering with Georgia Power to have a utility fair. So if you, uh, need your utility bills paid and you qualify, read the email tomorrow, and please come out, uh, to the fair. The details will be in the newsletter. Again, you can text the word Fulton to three-three-seven-seven-seven. We are just losing so many people this year. It's, it's, it's troubling. I, I do want to, um, also just ask for a moment of silence, um, not only for Tish Nagisi, but a, uh, old national native and long-term entrepreneur, uh, Mr. Jason Salter and, uh, his business partner Kenny have been missing for two weeks. Uh, they disappeared off of, uh, near East Point. There have been search parties, and, uh, Sunday was Jason's fortieth birthday. Um, so our prayers that are that he is not lost, um, and that Kenny is not lost, and that they will be returned to their families soon. With that, I would just ask for a brief moment of silence to pray for, uh, those missing men and their families, those missing fathers and their families. All right, thank you for that. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn this zoning hearing.
Move to adjourn the zoning hearing?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Um, let's just do a show of hands for the vote.
Record that is unanimous.
Yes, that is, that is unanimous. I am now going to take a, uh, I'm going to take a motion to, uh, bring back.
Reconvene.
Um, but before I, but before I do that, I do, I do want to say, uh, one of the items was the, uh, Earth Day activities. It was on the agenda because there are actually three different groups that are planning three separate activities. They may not be all aware of one another. However, uh, Councilwoman Gumps, who's been a lead organizer of one of them, and, uh, the Environmental Committee, who has been, uh, a lead organizer of the other one, um, neither of those people are here, so I'm going to ask if we can just place that on the March twenty-eighth agenda for discussion. And so we'll only have this only item, we'll only have this one item. So I'm going to entertain this motion to reconvene, and I just ask that we make that, uh, amendment as well.
Motion to reconvene to work session, Mr. Mayor.
Second. With the changes.
As, all right, it's been properly moved and seconded, as amended. Uh, we'll do a show of hands again.
Record that is unanimous.
All right, you have the floor. Mr. Turner.
This should be good. Can you hear me? Greetings, Mayor and Council. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Let's do this. Can you hear me? Yes. Greetings, Mayor and Council. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to present tonight. Um, I know it's late, but, uh, let me assure you that you will enjoy this presentation. Before I get started, I want to kind of give a couple of updates. I'm going to start with Cedar Grove Park. Councilman Sebastian, we've actually removed the fence from the park. I did talk to Stan today. Those trees should be in the process of being removed. I know we talked about that. The track, we did get a quote for the track, but however, we're going with the soft sur- surface track. So I'll have a, I'll have a quote for that as of Friday. So we're moving forward with that, but he assured me that those trees will be coming down with, between today and Friday, I guess. He was, he was, um, working on that. So that was a quick update. In terms of the lights at the tennis facility, I did find out from the contractor, the two lights that were damaged by the lightning, they're ordering the parts, they should be in about thirty days. So he assured me those two would be fixed, but the re- the o- the other lights are operable and they're ready to go. Um, also an update for Creole Park. Creole Park, um, tennis facility, there was some issues with the, the drainage issue in terms of the tennis courts. And we're in the process of having a contractor to come out to look at raising the tennis courts so that the drain, it would be no more drainage issues. Um, I think that's about it in terms of my updates. I just wanted to make sure. Oh, the, the, um, of course, the swimming pool is reopening, it's still tentative for fall two thousand twenty-three.
Um. Sandtown.
The Sandtown, I'm, I'm, Sandtown is going through, uh, I want to thank Martha, we, we've been meeting every, actually Thursday, she's been kind of giving me my updates. They're in the process of doing a mold remediation, from my understanding. So they're still going through that mold remediation process. So we'll meet this Thursday. If I have any updates, I'll just shoot it to you. And what, one of the things I try to do is, I know you all received my emails, I try to keep you informed of the things that are going on, whether it's on the city manager's report or just things that we're doing. Um, also, the outdoor basketball courts at Creole Park, of course, open. The one at Cliftondale are open, and the one at Welcome Mall, as you can see, they was out there working on them today. They'll be open tomorrow, they'll put the, they're starting to put the goals back up. I want to stay on that for a second. The reason why the courts were in the conditions that they were in was because of, we didn't have a preventive maintenance plan. One of the things I've stressed since I've been back is that we're spending millions of millions of dollars on these plans. We, it's sort of like, you know, I, I have a insurance policy on my house, or I have to get my oil changed every three thousand miles. We have to, uh, ensure that we continue to have a, when we, when we have these new builders, these renovations, we get a preventive maintenance plan. So just in case these things break down, we'll have a plan. And it comes along kind of with the, the services, so why not have it? I think in the past, we really weren't doing that. So one of the problems with the court is that we just didn't have a plan. So once we, you know, called CBS back to get a plan, they came out and fixed it. So I've stressed to my guys moving forward, it's no different than having a, getting the oil changed, or, you know, uh, Welcome Mall Park hadn't been pressure washed in fifteen years. So every two years, we have to get these builders pressure washed. So that's going to be vital. If we're spending millions and millions of tax dollars, I have, I will assure you that me and my team will make sure that we have a schedule when these things are, need to be done. So when these things will be done, whether it's pressure washing, whether it's pavilions up here being painted every three or four years, we have to have a schedule to maintain the things that we have, because that's why we are where we are, because we haven't been maintaining. And hopefully that makes sense. So I want, I just wanted to give you that update. Um, so let me, let me go back a little bit by saying this. Um, I'm going to give us some kudos. When you look at our program, we have pillars. We have three pillars, prevention, intervention, diversion. Now, most rec departments only deal with prevention. After-school, summer camp, athletics, that's the norm. Well, we pushing the status quo. My approach is holistic. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, um, sort of like, you know, we have a program called Kids in Play for five-year-olds, where we pop up in the park, Welcome Mall, Creole Park, and it's like a mobile unit that comes out, and we, we have rec programs for kids that's five to, to the senior Olympics. So that's the holistic approach, multi-generational programming. Nobody else is doing this. Everybody else is just doing after-school, summer camp, athletics. We're doing intervention. What is that? That's workforce development, financial literacy, and vocational training. We're going to do that. So actually, what we're doing is, we'll have, we have a university inside Parks and Rec, where we're going to educate people on HVAC, HVAC training from a certified, uh, electrical engineer, as well as, um, you know, we formed this partnership with, uh, It's Electric to come in and teach these young men and young women these trades. These are things that other rec departments are not doing. Again, they're just focusing on athletics and sports. We're going to feed into them because everybody can go to college. And last but not least, our diversion program, that's, that focuses on reducing the recidivism of our young black men and black women. So we're going to focus on those. So we're gonna focus on those three things. So you won't see intervention and diversion in Parks and Rec. Normally, those are mostly for nonprofits, but we're meeting the community where they are. These are things that we gotta have. So I just want to emphasize that. So as I go into this presentation, I want to talk about a little bit about the strategy. So it would behoove me not to have a strategy that encompasses the Parks Master Plan and the City of South Fulton Strategic Plan. So my strategic plan encompasses those two items. So it's deliberate in nature. So when you talk about Strategy One, Strategy One, Criteria Two comes from the Parks Master Plan. That's preserve and replace facility. That's just what I spoke about. You know, to minimize unexpected instances in the parks, we have to have a preventive maintenance plan. It goes back to that, it's point blank. If we had a plan, the courts would have been open in one week, not two and a half months or three months. So it's my responsibility to ensure anything that we do in parks, we have a plan. When contractors come out and do rebuilds, renovations, we gotta have a plan. So if these things break down, we can get these things open in thirty days, because citizens are coming to me, asking me why these things been broke down for two and a half years. So now that I'm here, it's my responsibility, we're not doing anything unless we have a preventive maintenance plan. I need to know what it is, how often you gonna come back and check on whatever needs to be checked on, pressure washing the building every two and a half, three years, pavilions need to be painted and checked every three years. These are type of things that are gonna keep our investments, these are investments. These are the type of things that are gonna keep our investments running and up front. So I just wanted to focus on that. So every objective has an action item. Strategy Two, Goal Three, the City of South Fulton Strategic Plan. So I don't want to pay attention to the objective, I want to focus more on the action plan. That's the action plan. So we talk about social recreation, screen on the green, center court, paint in the park, paw down, block party. Now, I don't know, many of you may not know, I have what you call a director's forum. I started this back in January, to date, I've had about thirty or forty people. So a lot of these ideas come straight from the community. I'm not that good, so these ideas say, well, why don't you have this? So these are citizens coming to me virtually or in person and saying, these are the things I want to see. So all I do is say, okay, this is what you want to do, let's try to do these things, such as the center court. We have a center court event. I think the flyer is certain clay now, it's at the South Fulton Tennis Center, it's gonna be on April the twenty-ninth. We just hired Mr. Alexander, who is, twenty, he's been in operational oversight in terms of tennis for twenty-five years. We're excited to have him. He's exceptional. He's gonna be able to give us everything we want from operational oversight of that tennis facility. That's something new, that's something we've never had. So that'll give you a chance to come out, meet with him, meet with myself, and learn about the different things we're doing at the tennis center. So all of these ideas, a lot of times, come from the general public in those director forums. Strategy Three, Goal Three, again, all of this falls under City of South Fulton Strategic Plan, increase community collaboration, youth engagement, police athletic league. Now, I want to stick and stay on the police athletic league for a minute. Many of you may not know, my father was APD for thirty years. He ran PAL for seven years, I'm a product of PAL. PAL afforded me the opportunity to go to college, that's point blank. I want that same opportunity that was given to me for the kids in South Fulton. That's it. PAL is a great organization, a national organization. It'll bring a lot of grants and things that, notoriety and grants and things that we currently don't have in place. So PAL is something that I'm gonna be pushing for over the next twenty-four months. That's kind of my, one of part of my FY twenty-three initiative. So we definitely need to get PAL, and with the help of Chief Meadows, we're gonna work something out, we're gonna get that here. It's Electric, again, that's my workforce development plan. Now, I want to stick and stay on this a little bit as well. So It's Electric is a company, private-owned company, minority company, electrical engineering. This is the company that's gonna come in and provide our youth with this training. Now, this training is free. It's a six-week course, and six weeks they'll graduate and they'll be certified electrician, thirty-five, forty dollars an hour. No other Parks and Recreation Department is doing that. Again, they're focusing on youth athletics. We're changing lives. So a part of that is the midnight basketball. Now, this midnight basketball is different, it's not like the midnight basketball in Atlanta. We'll do the midnight basketball, we'll start at seven-thirty, and we'll end at midnight. That's what we'll do. But before you play basketball, basketball is the carrot. The guys have to go in the classroom and get poured into by mentors, people on the council, elected official, athletes, financial literacy, expungement, a lot of these you've have, we'll partner with Urban League, with Greater Atlanta. A lot of these you need directers expunged. So before you play basketball, it's mandatory that you go back there and get that knowledge. So you'll get that knowledge in a classroom for an hour, and then you'll go play basketball. So the basketball is the carrot, just to get them in. And then a part of that is the certification class, the Workforce Academy, where you get the opportunity to, again, six weeks, every six weeks, we'll graduate a new cohort, electrical engineering, HVAC. Where are you gonna get that from? No other Parks and Rec is doing that, I can guarantee you that. Thinking Out Loud is my program, that's my male mentor and program. I'm an advocate of reducing recidivism. I think we need more male mentors, so that's kind of my program, and I'll kick that off in FY twenty-three. Of course, the midnight basketball would be huge, we're working on some big things, get some athletes to come in. I'm trying to work with the Hawks, I'm trying to get the Hawks decided, and I want to stick and stay on the Hawks for a second. I did talk to the Hawks and told them I want a State Farm neighborhood at Creole Park, Burdette Park, as well as Sandtown. So they came over here to do a walkthrough of this, and I told them, we need that in every area. And they assured me that we'll get those, and I think I talked to you about that neighborhood, we need that at every site. We gotta have that, because our kids, that's something different where we can do, we can play games. It's just, when you come in, it's vibrant, I want the kids to feel good when they go into the after-school program. So they assured me that their intent is to try to get one of those three parks moving forward, hopefully within the next twenty-four months. So I just wanted to let you know that. Strategy Four, Goal Three, increase program service deliverables. So this is my initiative, my action plan, to have the first inaugural youth football teams at Burdette Park, Creole Park, and Cliftondale. Now, this is huge. Burdette has never had a football team. Creole Park hasn't had a football team in fifteen years, and Cliftondale has never had a football team. This year, they will have football teams. That's huge for that community, to revitalization of that community. So we will have those, they're coming up. I want to have parades, I want those kids to feel like, you know, we're behind them all the way, we're gonna go out and we're gonna cheer. Strategy Four, continue your programs. These are a number of programs that I'm putting into place, and how I'm doing that is I'm hiring specialty, subject matter expert, case in point. We just, you all just approved ninety-two thousand dollars worth of equipment over here. It would behoove me not to have a personal trainer on the staff, that can go between Burdette Park and Welcome Mall Park. We need a personal trainer. If we have that, it would be nice for residents to come in and stop going to LA Fix, to come in and actually have a personal trainer on site that could show them how to lift weights and lose weight, so we'll have that. So these are the type of things that we're doing. We're focusing on individuals with a certain skill set, and we're partnering with them to come in and provide these services, whether it's Zumba, cardio fitness, whether it's sign language, one of the staff is doing that. We're gonna do EA Sports here, that's why I need those neighborhoods at Sandtown Park and at Creole and at Burdette. So we're doing a litany of things. Also, Strategy Three, Goal One, customer service. Of course, we're gonna continue to work on our customer service skills, answering the phone, just making sure we're providing superior customer service, both internally and externally as well. Last but not least, Strategy Six, employee engagement. One of the biggest, my biggest responsibility as a leader is staff morale. Staff morale was down, one of the first thing I did was, we had our first main event, I think in January. It very well turned out, we had fun. I actually gave out my employee of the month, which was in January, it was Joan True. So I'm trying to do things to build that staff morale and camaraderie that wasn't here prior to me, and I think we're doing a pretty good job in terms of doing that. Internal promotions, investment in trust and building, so we're doing a number of team building exercise just to get that camaraderie back, because once you get that back, then the staff will actually do the work. So what I do, I'm transformational, I invest in the staff and the staff invest in the work. And that concludes my presentation, do you have any questions?
I'm back in the work session queue, I didn't know if you needed to do that. I know it's connected to the minutes, whatever, so while we're waiting for folks to get back, I've already spoken to you, we got all your questions, but I do just want to repeat and reiterate that this will be the last year that we have Athletic League football, and I want to make sure, Mr. Toms and our communication people, that we get out communication to all the leagues so that no one feign surprise next year.
And the reason, let me kind of, just a caveat, the reason why we're doing that is because we don't have those issues with my basketball program, we don't have any issues. There are certain issues we've had in the past, remember, this is my second stint here. So one of the things I've always said is that I can't control if it's an outside organization. I could control what I could control if it's in-house, whether it's hiring staff, firing staff, and doing those things. And if I can control it, I could put certain SOPs in the place to make sure that we're taking care of unruly parents, unruly behaviors, things of that nature. So if I could control it better, then it serves as a better environment for our youth, and that's the thing we want to do. So case in point, that will happen, but these three teams are the first three teams that we will take over this year, and the plan is to take over more next year. So I will be in front of you in FY twenty-four asking for the athletic budget to be able to do that.
Please do, Councilwoman Willis.
So who, I mean, who made, I mean, is that your recommendation to this council?
So, yes, ma'am, that's my recommendation, and I've always felt that way.
Okay, so, and that's for football?
That's for football, and then we'll gradually go into, well, we'll start off with football, because it's a big undertaking. Football, you know, we have about three thousand youth, so it would require me to have forty-five staff. So I gotta take it slow, so this process may last about three years before we fully integrate all of these changes in terms of athletics. But I need to be able to control it, because right now, I just can't control the football environment. It's really more the football environment than any other environment.
I understand, I just want to make sure that you bring forth to this council a recommendation and with a plan before you pull the plug, because that's not a decision that should just be made, you know, latterly, when that has been the way we have operated for over twenty years, and I'm not saying what you're saying is not correct, because I do agree with you. But what I would like to ask, I didn't see a football program at Welcome Mall. Is Welcome Mall not having football this year?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see more communication come from out of Parks and Rec. So when we have programs and when we have wins, and when we have, the teams are doing well, when we have projects that are having completed, I would like for this council and the community, but definitely this council, to be notified. When, where are we with the Park Master Plan? Because I'm very interested in that.
So the Park Master Plan, we want to get that on the next agenda, and I'm sorry I omitted that. So we want to get that on the next agenda. I did meet with Mr. Perez, I think it's a great plan, I think it's very deliberate in nature. And once we get it on the plan, what we could do is, we can, part of that is, once you get it approved by council, we'll proceed with the URA funds to demolish Cliftondale. And once it's demolished, what I want to do is make it a passive park, dog park, kind of a walking trail that we're doing at Cliftondale, and those, that exercise equipment that we're doing at Creole, Cedar Grove Park, my apologies. So it'd be similar in nature, because one of the things we did do, I feel like, we kind of, you know, the circumstances, we kind of abandoned that community. So my job as a director is to ensure that once that, we demo that building, that we still provide services out there, soccer, basketball, that's why we're having a football team out there. So we still want to provide, I don't need a building to provide services, does that make any sense? All I need is a field, because I'm a programmer. So those are the things we want to do. So we'll get that, we'll try to get that on the next, on the next, for approval, the next agenda for approval. So I've seen, yes, ma'am.
Does the master plan need to come back on a work session, or does it need to come up? Because the regular, the regular council meeting are typically like formality for us to vote on things. And I know that we all were consulted on, like, maybe how we finance, I think we were on phase four, and then nobody, then we never did have a meeting, at least I didn't. And so I need, do we need to come back to a work session before we go to a regular council meeting? Because I would hate for us to take up a lot of time in a regular council meeting.
If, it depends on, I guess, if you need to talk to Mr. Perez again. It has my stamp of approval, I'm ready to move forward. I love it, I've seen it, I think it's very, again, it's deliberate. I think, you know, it, you know, it's one of the best plans that I've seen, and I was skeptical at first. So maybe if you have any more detailed questions in terms of funding or things of that nature, but I think we can move forward.
Because that wasn't fleshed out, what type of, we were given options on how to fund it.
Okay.
And that wasn't fleshed out, so even if we don't want to bring it to a council meeting or a work session, Mr. Toms, can you direct his staff to schedule meetings with us, maybe in threes, so that we can finalize it before he bring it to a work, I mean, not a work session, before he bring it to a council meeting for us to vote on?
Come on back up to your new seat, Mr. Toms.
Yes, I would highly recommend us having a separate meeting and going through it.
Because we got a new council member.
It's worthwhile to break it off by districts and kind of go through the park changes by district. That way everyone could fully understand what changes are in there. I know a few districts had some changes, so we want to make sure everything's been captured. Mr. Perez is fairly open, we could probably get those scheduled towards the end of this month.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just would caution, I would just ask that we, before we just say, and I understand football is the main thing that you want to focus on as far as associations, but some of the associations are public-private partnerships that will benefit the city. So before we just say, no, we don't want no athletic associations, I think that, number one, we need to make sure that the city is gonna be able to fund these programs, because football can get expensive. And then, number two, we need to have the staff. So I would say that if we're gonna get rid of football associations, let's look to the leaders of these programs and see if we can at least hire some of the coaches part-time to kind of help work with you and your staff to lead these programs. Because, and number three, I just hope that we are really, really focusing on letting our kids that live in our community be a part of these programs, because, you know, a lot of the programs, historically in the past, they recruited kids that didn't even live in the city of South Fulton.
So let's stay there. So this is another caveat to why I need to control it, I absolutely agree. So just, you just actually made my point. One of the things that I've observed is that forty-five, fifty percent, maybe sixty percent of the kids that play in association don't even live in South Fulton. So now I can regulate that if I control it. Ninety percent of our basketball league, the players live in the city of South Fulton. So that's one of the biggest hurdles that I've seen, because I'm like, these kids don't even live in South Fulton, so why are we, so, but if I control it, then it would be like the basketball scene, if that makes any sense. So you're absolutely right, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't want to, and let me make it clear, I don't want to exclude people who don't live in the city of South Fulton, but we do need to make sure that the programs are catering to the people and the taxpayers who live here, because some of our players go to other cities and they play. So, you know, we don't want to totally exclude it, but when you have majority of a team, and they don't live in the city.
No, you're right.
And then, you know, how I found out is I was actually getting drugged, because the previous park director suspended the program due to violence. And then, when we did the research, half of the people didn't even live in our city, and they were just like,
I remember that.
You know, so, and can you please assess our football fields? Because what repeatedly comes up every year is that our fields are infested, we have these holes in our fields. And so we desperately, all of our football fields, definitely need some work. And then we also need to revisit the Johnny Talbot Heat-related injury ordinance, because we need to have, make sure that we are compliant with that, so we don't have any more tragedies that happen in. So we don't have any more tragedies that happen in our city.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Turner, for, um, your presentation. Um, did I hear you? I think I understand what he's saying. You wanna control the football programs, right? I know that there's a group that has approached, has approached me almost a year ago, trying to set up a program at Wilkinson Mill Park, which by the way, has a great football field and several baseball fields. And I noticed that one is not listed for any football programming on your list. But you're also saying that you wanna control the program. So where does it leave us with this group? Because per, I think an email that they sent last week, they, they wanted to use some outside funding to help us upgrade some things in that park. And of course, we forward them to you guys to figure out how that will work. So where does that leave that program?
Sure, let, let me just say this, let me go back. Um, my deputy director, Mr. Jordan, has created a vetting process. So one of the things that we, we failed to do is, when we allowed these associations in, is that we didn't vet them.
Right.
So, you know, through a vetting process, I can call other organizations, municipal governments, and we were finding that these organizations were being ran out of the park and they were coming to South Fulton as a safe haven, if that makes any sense. That's what was going on. So if they're not allowed in, it's just due to the fact that I vetted them or Mr. Jordan has vetted them or part of my team has vetted them. Because what happens is these organizations get kicked out of the parks. And then they come to South Fulton and say, well, they're not doing that over here. But I talked to other directors, other athletic directors. So they may change their name, but they don't change their behavior. So my job and my responsibility is to catch that where it is and say, no, 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 no. You're the same team, you just changed your name from the Eagles to the Ducks. So that's the game that they're playing. So here, case in point, if I control it, our vetting process, I know a lot of directors and we know a lot of people in other agencies. It's just a phone call to say, do you know coach? And they'll say, leave that individual alone. So me controlling it is more of, I'm trying to keep that unruly behavior out of South Fulton. I'm trying to keep that, um, the use of drugs out of South Fulton. There's been times where I walk out the door and I smell marijuana and I'm just being transparent. So here's the thing, if I could control that, there's an SOP that says if I smell that, y'all gotta go. So my basketball, again, we don't have any of those problems. I'm not trying to be, you know, trying to, you know, have a segment of the population where I'm trying, I'm just trying to control the flow and what happens in South Fulton. And the ultimate goal is to keep these kids safe. These are role models. So again, it's my responsibility to make sure that our programs are safe and that the coaches and the parents are role models. And some of these organizations, they, they're, they're just not there yet. So, you know, if, if we vetted them and they're not in, it's because we vetted them and found out information. And that's not information we would just give out to the council. We'll just say, you know, well, you don't meet our criterias, if that makes any sense.
It does. Have you vetted the organization I'm talking about?
So the organization, what, what's the name of the organization?
Wait, 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 don't do that.
No, no, just, just the organization. I, I, I need you to go back and look at it.
I'll look at it.
Especially since you don't have programming for that park.
Yes, sir.
What I was told is that these are members who live in the community. And let me just say this, District Four basically has two parks, City Grove Park, Wilkinson Mill, which is the largest one, right? Right now, there's no program in there for anything.
Okay.
Right? And I wanna make sure before we turn people away, since we're not planning to use any program in there, that we properly vet them.
Sure.
Cause District Four just happened to be the district of two state championships in the last few years in football. So while the kids have school that they can play at, maybe having other leagues. Yes, Creekside and Langston News on state championships. So I wanna make sure while we don't have any programming planned there for football, we're not churning away a good partner then to leave those fields empty and without, um, any options for the kids over there.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Reese.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you Director Turner for your presentation. Um, I do support that, um, in-house, um, of our parks and recs because it can be very robust. And for following our mission statement for creating a great customer service, a safe environment, inclusive of the people within our city limits, our ecosystem, innovative with partnerships, uh, public, private partnerships and economically vibrant city. And so I think that this encompasses everything. I think Parks and Recs is directly correlated to economic development, uh, and people who wanna come in and stay. And so I just support your vision, um, all the way holistically. And so, uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Senator.
Dr. Earl.
Thank you, um, thank you for your presentation as well. Just a couple of things. Um, I wanna make sure that we have a, um, some kind of coverage plan and make sure all the parks are open every day. Um, I have had some, um, concerns raised about that. So, um, just making sure we have them accessible, particularly, um, on those days when school out. You know, Fulton County has a interesting schedule now and so they have these long weekends. And so, um, you know, making sure we have park rangers. And I know that falls, doesn't fall under you directly, but coordinating with police because I also know it was a lot of people in the park just, just yesterday, I think it was, um, in relation to Tram McCrow. So we wanna make sure all the kids are safe when they are congregating in large groups. And then, um, I'm gonna ditto with, um, I heard, um, some of my colleagues. Um, I don't know that we should throw out the bath water with the bathtub as the expression with the athletic associations. I don't know if it's a way to kind of rein them in, whether it's, um, you know, the percentage of youth that come from South Fulton that are residents or some of those things to address it. Because with a city of our size, I don't know that we can have enough rec staff to provide the kind of program and the robust program that we need to have for our young people. So for those who are doing the right thing, you know, trying to figure out if we can find a, you know, a way to keep them on, you know, I know Sandtown Athletic, I mean, you know, um, they've been working for a long time in this community and, you know, um, I, I would just hate to lose them. So figuring out what needs, you know, what kind of regulations or whatever need to be in place, working alongside, I think that's really, really important. And I think that kind of covers it. Those, those were my big, and thank you for being so responsive when I've reached out.
Sure, so let me say this about the coaches. The coaches will still coach with us. We're, we're still, we're, we're not, we're not really, we're, we're just, I just need to control the, the, the fact that sixty or seventy percent of the residents are South Fulton participants. And also the coaches, we're recruiting the coaches that still coach. I just need to be able to have that control as it relates to the behavior and the fact that those. So I'm not really saying, okay, the coaches have to go. I'm saying that I still need to be able to have some control over that. That, that's, that's all, yes ma'am.
I understand. I think we also need to look at that with our cultural affairs. I don't know what the numbers look like about, um, young people who are registering in those, those art classes and stuff. Cause they fill up like day one.
Exactly.
You can't get in and I don't know.
You're right.
If you know, if they're from city of South Fulton or somewhere else, priorities should be given to our kids, so.
So I, I'll look into that because you, you're probably right. Cause they fill up a little too fast for.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll look into that to make sure at least, even if I create an SOP where it looks seventy or sixty percent of the kids have to come from South Fulton.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Willis, this is your second time.
So I know one of the reasons that athletic associations was around is because of the liability. They were able to, you know, um, if anybody got hurt, it was on them. It was on their five oh one C three and not the liability on the city. So we need to consider that as well. But, uh, Sandtown, um, has been an outstanding program. As a matter of fact, one of the head coaches, main coaches is my constituent. And so I would ask that, and I've talked to you about that, is that I am agreement that we do need to look at football as, um, to bring it in-house, but we need to assess the liability. And I would, and I've asked that you work with that individual to kind of help you and staff build a model for the city across the board. Um, and, um, I asked him to approach you, talk to you, I've asked you to talk to him. And then, um, you know, work in partnership and he was very receptive to it. So, um, I just say that before we pull the plug, that we, um, look at, we have a plan. We have a good plan.
Sure.
And then we have across the board plan for everybody. And then, um, you also met another, um, there were some, uh, you met another family at the Marquis Grissom Association Gala that was very instrumental in the football program too. So, um, you know, just kind of talk to those individuals and that person came from the old national area.
Yes, ma'am.
Talk to those individuals so that when you decide to move on, you can build a good plan to do it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, a couple of quick comments. Uh, first I, I wanna say I'm in one hundred percent, uh, support of bringing all of, um, our athletics in-house. Maybe not this year, but, but over time. And I know that those won't just be the only three teams. First of all, I, I wholeheartedly concur with, uh, Councilman Sebastian. District Four is our fastest growing and probably one of our youngest demographically, uh, districts. So you got a lot of new, young families that need activities. But, um, I think one of the things, you know, uh, when we're talking about athletic associations, one of the, one of the problems that I have seen is that many of them are structured to win, right? They're trying to get their kids in the NFL. Like that's one of the reasons you have kids playing from, from, from all of these different places. But, you know, no, coming, coming up through these associations, uh, coming and watching them in places like Woke Mall Park, uh, where I grew up. One of the important things that, that, everyone's not gonna go to the NFL. Everyone's not gonna go, you know, uh, play pro, professional, uh, baseball. But everyone can learn the fundamentals and two important things that I think that we learn in team sports. One is how to play as a team, but this one I think is so important. And that's how to lose. How to lose, how to shake hands. So much of the violence that we're seeing with our young people these days is because they don't know how to lose. You know, they don't always fight, they don't know how to lose a disagreement, they don't know how to shake hands and shake it out. So, um, I wanna make sure that we're providing opportunities, not just for the super talented kids, but for all of our kids. I think that we can expand, uh, to multiple parks. I think one of the key things that I'm hearing this presentation is that we can expand as quickly as we fund you for. Uh, cause the parks are severely underfunded in terms of their staff. And we know, we've heard for years now that we are nowhere near the NRPA, uh, standards that we should have. Uh, the last thing though, uh, we approved this fee schedule and, and we had this conversation. I think it's important to put this on, uh, tape. And that is seniors over sixty-five can now attend any park facility for free. So if you're listening, Miss Head, any park facility. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Turner.
No, I, I think we mentioned that at one of the previous council meetings. So just a, just a caveat, uh, Mayor, to what you're saying earlier about competitive versus development. So there again is an example of why I need to control it. So here, case in point, we have our regular basketball league that we just concluded. Now we'll go into our developmental league. Associations don't do that. So there's a place for, it's, it's that inclusion. So in our basketball league that we can control, we have a competitive league and we have a developmental league. If I had a, if I controlled football, I would have the same. Associations, everybody's going to the NFL, everybody's recruiting everybody. But in our league, it's a little bit different because again, we had that competitive league and we have that developmental league. So you kind of just echo what I've been saying for, for years.
Much for that incredible presentation. And with that, I'm sorry, Councilman Reeves.
And your, uh, uh, well, how can I say this? Uh, age league, right? And so like your forty-plus league, like your sixty-plus league and like your softball, your kickball. Oh, and like the kickball is, I'm sure that we will have kickball fields put in somewhere around some parks as well. And two, another caveat is, I would be remiss if I didn't say this because Kennesaw State just made the tournament the dance for the first time ever. And go look at the team and some of those kids are from right here, South Fulton.
All right. Uh, one, one last, uh, quick announcement I, I, I forgot to make. We will be having our court here tomorrow. Um, if you are looking for a court date, we are back meeting in person. Please, uh, just, uh, call our courts to find out about your case. That number is four seven oh eight zero nine seven four zero zero. Again, that's four seven oh eight oh nine seventy-four hundred. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, we need to have executive session. Discuss real estate and personnel. And, yeah, real estate and personnel.
Is that, are, are you making a motion to?
Well, uh, I think this was discussion, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we need to discuss real estate and personnel.
We, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, did you wanna make a substitute motion?
Yes, I make a substitute motion to, um, executive session to discuss real estate and personnel.
There, there's second, I don't even think a substitute motion, does it need a second? Okay, is there a second for that substitute motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
This is a motion to recess for executive session for real estate and personnel. Roll call, Councilmember Raoul.
Nay.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved. We are recessed at ten eleven PM.